Good morning, everybody.[12.31][12.31]12.01] Welcome to City Hall.[15.31][15.31] Welcome to Council Chambers and welcome to Meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Tuesday, September 13th, 2005.[24.31][24.31] The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m.[29.31][29.31] Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us.[33.31][33.31] For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35.[42.31][42.31] We can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone.[48.31][48.31] Madam Clerk, please call the roll.[51.31][51.31] Cardenas Garcetti, Grohl, Han, LeBonde, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendale Smith, Weiss,
Sign, Padilla, 10 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.[62.31][62.31] Thank you very much.[64.31][64.31] The Council is officially in session before beginning with the matters appearing on today's
agenda, colleagues.[72.31][72.31] This being Tuesday, the first meeting of the week, we have scheduled our salute to the flag.[80.31][80.31] Let me ask a very special friend of City Hall and of this Council, Ms. Barbara Yaroslavsky, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.[90.31][90.31] Would you all please rise?[93.31][93.31] Thank you.[94.31][94.31] Would you all place your right hand over your heart and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?[101.31][101.31] I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.[115.31][115.31] Thank you.[116.31][116.31] Thank you very much.[118.31][118.31] Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.[121.31][121.31] Approval of the minutes.[123.31][123.31] Mr. Reyes moves and Mr. Rosendale seconds.[126.31][126.31] Commendatory resolutions for approval.[128.31][128.31] Mr. Cardenas moves and Mr. LeBonde seconds.[131.31][131.31] Mr. President, on the regular agenda, items noticed for public hearing, items 1 through 8 are ordinances relative to street lighting districts, and there is a recommendation on number 7 to receive and file that, and that is from the Bureau of Street Lighting.[152.31][152.31] Colleagues, any objection to receiving and filing item number 7?[158.31][158.31] Any objections?[159.31][159.31] Seeing none, so ordered, leaving items 1 through 8 before us.[164.31][164.31] Do not have requests for members of the public to address the Council on these items.[171.31][171.31] Public hearings are open and closed.[174.31][174.31] Any requests for specials on items 1 through 8?[178.31][178.31] Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.[185.31][185.31] 10 eyes.[186.31][186.31] Those are approved, oh, excuse me, those are ordinances and carryover for second
readings.[194.31][194.31] Next items, please.[195.31][195.31] Next item is item number 9.[197.31][197.31] It's also a public hearing item, and the recommendation for Council action would be
to continue the hearing and ordinance to October 11th.[209.31][209.31] Members, item number 9 now before us, and I do not have requests for members of the
public to address the Council on item number 9.[220.31][220.31] Public hearing is open, and without objection, continued to October 11th.[226.31][226.31] Next item.[227.31][227.31] Item number 10 is a public hearing item, and that's a street vacation in Council District
5, and I believe there's a request to continue that matter.[238.31][238.31] Okay.[239.31][239.31] A request to continue, colleagues, any objection?[242.31][242.31] Seeing none, when's the new hearing date?[245.31][245.31] The new hearing date is 45 days, and that's October 28th.[251.31][251.31] Okay.[252.31][252.31] Item 10 is continued.[254.31][254.31] Next items, please.[256.31][256.31] Next items, 11 through 25 are items for which public hearings have been held.[262.31][262.31] Item 11 is confirmation of a commissioner.[265.31][265.31] Do you wish to hold that on the desk?[268.31][268.31] Let's hold item 11 on the desk, but it will be the first item we take up when we come
back to items called specials, leaving items 12 through 25.[281.31][281.31] Members, public hearing has been held on these items in committee.[286.31][286.31] A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings.[290.31][290.31] If there's no such motion, specials, beginning with Mr. Reyes.[295.31][295.31] Thank you, Council President, item number 12, please.[299.31][299.31] 12 called special by Mr. Reyes, Ms. Grohl.[303.31][303.31] It's going to be 12 for Mr. Weiss, and he needs to add something for Mr. Weiss, so
I'll follow.[311.31][311.31] Okay.[312.31][312.31] Mr. Smith.[313.31][313.31] 17 called special by Mr. Smith, Mr. Parks.[317.31][317.31] The Chair asked that we move the Budget and Finance Report for number 15.[324.31][324.31] Item 15, we have a motion to move the Budget and Finance Committee report.[331.31][331.31] Mr. Garcetti.[332.31][332.31] 19, if we can continue for one week, please.[336.31][336.31] Any objection, colleagues?[338.31][338.31] Seeing none, item 19 is continued.[341.31][341.31] Mr. Cardenas.[342.31][342.31] 21 special.[343.31][343.31] 21 called special by Mr. Cardenas.[346.31][346.31] Any other specials?[348.31][348.31] Colleagues, on members 12 through 25, if there's no further requests for specials, let's
open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[363.31][363.31] 12 eyes.[364.31][364.31] Those are approved.[365.31][365.31] Items 13 and 14 are ordinances, and are approved on first reading.[372.31][372.31] We now have 12 members present, colleagues, Mr. Zine moves reconsideration of items 1 through 6 and number 8.[384.31][384.31] Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[391.31][391.31] Those ordinances are back before us, and let's reopen the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[401.31][401.31] Those ordinances are now approved on first reading.[405.31][405.31] Next items, please.[407.31][407.31] Next items are items 26 through 92, and those are items for which public hearings
have not been held.[416.31][416.31] 10 votes are required for consideration.[419.31][419.31] 26 through 92 now before us, and I do have a card in item 26.[425.31][425.31] We'll call that special to hear from members of the public.[431.31][431.31] On the balance of the items, I do not have speaker cards.[436.31][436.31] Those public hearings are open and closed.[439.31][439.31] Requests for specials, 26 through 92.[443.31][443.31] Mr. Parks.[444.31][444.31] 83 special.[445.31][445.31] 83 called special by Mr. Parks.[448.31][448.31] Mr. Garcetti.[449.31][449.31] On 91, I would ask that as part of consent, we assert jurisdiction and send that back
to Plum.[457.31][457.31] After we assert jurisdiction?[458.31][458.31] Yeah, we can either do it separately or as a consent, but under Prop 245.[463.31][463.31] Okay, then I'd move that we Prop 245 that and send that back to Plum, please.[468.31][468.31] Okay, let's take a separate vote on item 91.[472.31][472.31] Let's open the roll on item 91, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[478.31][478.31] So jurisdiction has been asserted and referred to the Plum Committee.[484.31][484.31] On the balance of items 26 through 92, colleagues, any other specials?[491.31][491.31] There's no further specials, then let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[501.31][501.31] Those items are approved.[503.31][503.31] Next items, please.[505.31][505.31] Next item on the supplemental agenda, item number 93, that is Transportation Committee
Report and an amending motion and new ordinance is also included on that.[518.31][518.31] Okay, and those have been properly either agendas or distributed?[523.31][523.31] Yes, it has.[524.31][524.31] Okay, colleagues, item 93 now before us.[527.31][527.31] Public hearing has been held in committee on this item.[531.31][531.31] A motion would be required to reopen the public hearing.[535.31][535.31] Any requests to call item 93 special?[538.31][538.31] Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 93, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[545.31][545.31] That is approved.[546.31][546.31] Next item, please.[547.31][547.31] Items 94 and 95 are also items for which public hearings have not been held.[553.31][553.31] 10 votes are required for consideration.[556.31][556.31] Members, items 94 and 95 now before us, and I do not have requests for members of
the public to address the Council on these items.[566.31][566.31] Public hearings are open and closed.[568.31][568.31] Any requests for specials on items 1 through 8?[572.31][572.31] Seeing none, let's open the roll on those items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.[579.31][579.31] 10 eyes.[580.31][580.31] Those are approved.[581.31][581.31] Items 13 and 14 are ordinances, and are approved on first reading.[588.31][588.31] We now have 12 members present, colleagues, Mr. Zine moves reconsideration of items 1 through 6 and the number 8.[599.31][599.31] Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[605.31][605.31] Those ordinances are back before us, and let's reopen the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[615.31][615.31] Those ordinances are now approved on first reading.[619.31][619.31] Next items, please.[621.31][621.31] Next items are items 26 through 92, and those are items for which public hearings
have not been held.[630.31][630.31] 10 votes are required for consideration.[633.31][633.31] 26 through 92 now before us, and I do have a card in item 26.[638.31][638.31] We'll call that special to hear from members of the public.[642.31][642.31] On the balance of the items, I do not have speaker cards.[646.31][646.31] Those public hearings are open and closed.[649.31][649.31] Requests for specials, 26 through 92.[653.31][653.31] Mr. Parks.[654.31][654.31] 83 special.[655.31][655.31] 83 called special by Mr. Parks.[658.31][658.31] Mr. Garcetti.[659.31][659.31] On 91, I would ask that as part of consent, we assert jurisdiction and send that back
to Plum.[667.31][667.31] After we assert jurisdiction?[668.31][668.31] Yeah, we can either do it separately or as a consent, but under Prop 245.[673.31][673.31] Okay, then I'd move that we Prop 245 that and send that back to Plum, please.[678.31][678.31] Okay, let's take a separate vote on item 91.[682.31][682.31] Let's open the roll on item 91, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[688.31][688.31] So jurisdiction has been asserted and referred to the Plum Committee.[693.31][693.31] On the balance of items 26 through 92, colleagues, any other specials?[699.31][699.31] There's no further specials, then let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[709.31][709.31] Those items are approved.[711.31][711.31] Next items, please.[713.31][713.31] Next item on the supplemental agenda, item number 93, that is Transportation Committee
Report and an amending motion and new ordinance is also included on that.[726.31][726.31] Okay, and those have been properly either agendas or distributed?[731.31][731.31] Yes, it has.[732.31][732.31] Okay, colleagues, item 93 now before us.[735.31][735.31] Public hearing has been held in committee on this item.[739.31][739.31] A motion would be required to reopen the public hearing.[743.31][743.31] Any requests to call item 93 special?[746.31][746.31] Any requests to call item 93 special?[749.31][749.31] Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 93, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[756.31][756.31] That is approved.[757.31][757.31] Next item, please.[758.31][758.31] Items 94 and 95 are also items for which public hearings have not been held.[763.31][763.31] 10 votes are required for consideration.[766.31][766.31] Members, items 94 and 95 now before us, and I do not have requests for members of
the public to address the Council on item number 9.[777.31][777.31] Public hearing is open, and without objection, continued to October 11th.[783.31][783.31] Next item.[784.31][784.31] Item number 10 is a public hearing item, and that's a street vacation in Council District
5, and I believe there's a request to continue that matter.[795.31][795.31] Okay, a request to continue, colleagues, any objection?[798.31][798.31] Seeing none, when's the new hearing date?[800.31][800.31] The new hearing date is 45 days, and that's October 28th.[804.31][804.31] Okay.[805.31][805.31] Item 10 is continued.[806.31][806.31] Next items, please.[807.31][807.31] Next items, 11 through 25 are items for which public hearings have been held.[812.31][812.31] Item 11 is confirmation of a commissioner.[815.31][815.31] Do you wish to hold that on the desk?[818.31][818.31] Let's hold item 11 on the desk, but it will be the first item we take up when we come
back to items called specials, leaving items 12 through 25.[831.31][831.31] Members, public hearing has been held on these items in committee.[836.31][836.31] A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings.[840.31][840.31] If there's no such motion, specials, beginning with Mr. Reyes.[844.31][844.31] Thank you, Council President, item number 12, please.[848.31][848.31] 12 called special by Mr. Reyes, Ms. Grohl.[851.31][851.31] It's going to be 12 for Mr. Weiss, and he needs to add something for Mr. Weiss, so
I'll follow.[859.31][859.31] Okay, Mr. Smith.[860.31][860.31] 17 called special by Mr. Smith, Mr. Parks.[864.31][864.31] The Chair asked that we move the Budget and Finance Report for number 15.[871.31][871.31] Item 15, we have a motion to move the Budget and Finance Committee report.[878.31][878.31] Mr. Garcetti.[879.31][879.31] 19, if we can continue for one week, please.[883.31][883.31] Any objection, colleagues?[885.31][885.31] Seeing none, item 19 is continued.[888.31][888.31] Mr. Cardenas.[889.31][889.31] 21 special.[890.31][890.31] 21 called special by Mr. Cardenas.[893.31][893.31] Any other specials?[895.31][895.31] Colleagues, on members 12 through 25, if there's no further requests for specials, let's
open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[908.31][908.31] 12 eyes.[909.31][909.31] Those are approved.[911.31][911.31] Items 13 and 14 are ordinances, and are approved on first reading.[918.31][918.31] We now have 12 members present, colleagues, Mr. Zine moves reconsideration of items 1 through 6 and the number 8.[929.31][929.31] Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[935.31][935.31] Those ordinances are back before us, and let's reopen the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[945.31][945.31] Those ordinances are now approved on first reading.[948.31][948.31] Next items, please.[949.31][949.31] Next items are items 26 through 92, and those are items for which public hearings
have not been held.[956.31][956.31] 10 votes are required for consideration.[958.31][958.31] 26 through 92 now before us, and I do have a card in item 26.[963.31][963.31] We'll call that special to hear from members of the public.[967.31][967.31] On the balance of the items, I do not have speaker cards.[971.31][971.31] Those public hearings are open and closed.[974.31][974.31] Requests for specials, 26 through 92.[978.31][978.31] Mr. Parks.[979.31][979.31] 83 special.[980.31][980.31] 83 called special by Mr. Parks.[983.31][983.31] Mr. Garcetti.[984.31][984.31] On 91, I would ask that as part of consent, we assert jurisdiction and send that back
to Plum.[992.31][992.31] After we assert jurisdiction?[993.31][993.31] Yeah, we can either do it separately or as a consent, but under Prop 245.[998.31][998.31] Okay, then I'd move that we Prop 245 that and send that back to Plum, please.[1004.31][1004.31] Okay, let's take a separate vote on item 91.[1008.31][1008.31] Let's open the roll on item 91, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[1014.31][1014.31] So jurisdiction has been asserted and referred to the Plum Committee.[1019.31][1019.31] On the balance of items 26 through 92, colleagues, any other specials?[1025.31][1025.31] There's no further specials, then let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[1035.31][1035.31] Those items are approved.[1037.31][1037.31] Next items, please.[1038.31][1038.31] Next item on the supplemental agenda, item number 93, that is Transportation Committee
Report and an amending motion and new ordinance is also included on that.[1049.31][1049.31] Okay, and those have been properly either agendas or distributed?[1053.31][1053.31] Yes, it has.[1054.31][1054.31] Okay, colleagues, item 93 now before us.[1057.31][1057.31] Public hearing has been held in committee on this item.[1061.31][1061.31] A motion would be required to reopen the public hearing.[1065.31][1065.31] Any requests to call item 93 special?[1068.31][1068.31] Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 93, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[1075.31][1075.31] That is approved.[1076.31][1076.31] Next item, please.[1077.31][1077.31] Items 94 and 95 are also items for which public hearings have not been held.[1083.31][1083.31] 10 votes are required for consideration.[1086.31][1086.31] Members, items 94 and 95 now before us, and I do not have requests for members of
the public to address the Council on these items.[1097.31][1097.31] Public hearings are open and closed.[1100.31][1100.31] Requests for specials, 26 through 92.[1104.31][1104.31] Mr. Parks.[1105.31][1105.31] 83 special.[1106.31][1106.31] 83 called special by Mr. Parks.[1108.31][1108.31] Mr. Garcetti.[1109.31][1109.31] On 94, I would ask that as part of consent, we assert jurisdiction and send that back to Plum.[1117.31][1117.31] After we assert jurisdiction?[1118.31][1118.31] Yeah, we can either do it separately or as a consent, but under Prop 245.[1123.31][1123.31] Okay, then I'd move that we Prop 245 that and send that back to Plum, please.[1129.31][1129.31] Okay, let's take a separate vote on item 91.[1133.31][1133.31] Let's open the roll on item 91, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[1139.31][1139.31] So jurisdiction has been asserted and referred to the Plum Committee.[1144.31][1144.31] On the balance of items 26 through 92, colleagues, any other specials?[1151.31][1151.31] There's no further specials, then let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[1161.31][1161.31] Those items are approved.[1163.31][1163.31] Next items, please.[1165.31][1165.31] Next item on the supplemental agenda, item number 93, that is Transportation Committee
Report and an amending motion and new ordinance is also included on that.[1178.31][1178.31] Okay, and those have been properly either agendas or distributed?[1183.31][1183.31] Yes, it has.[1184.31][1184.31] Okay, colleagues, item 93 now before us.[1187.31][1187.31] Public hearing has been held in committee on this item.[1191.31][1191.31] A motion would be required to reopen the public hearing.[1195.31][1195.31] Any requests to call item 93 special?[1198.31][1198.31] Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 93, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[1205.31][1205.31] That is approved.[1206.31][1206.31] Next item, please.[1207.31][1207.31] Items 94 and 95 are also items for which public hearings have not been held.[1213.31][1213.31] 10 votes are required for consideration.[1216.31][1216.31] Members, items 94 and 95 now before us, and I do not have requests for members of
the public to address the Council on these items.[1226.31][1226.31] Public hearings are open and closed.[1228.31][1228.31] Requests to call these items special?[1230.31][1230.31] Seeing none, let's open the roll on 94 and 95, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.[1236.31][1236.31] Those are approved.[1237.31][1237.31] Next items, please.[1238.31][1238.31] That would take Council back to the items called special, and the first item, I believe,
is the confirmation, Ms. Barbara Yaroslavsky, and that's item number 11.[1248.31][1248.31] Okay, if Ms. Yaroslavsky would please come forward to the center table.[1253.31][1253.31] Colleagues, we have item number 11 before us, confirmation of a nominee to the Commission
on Children, Youth, and Their Families.[1264.31][1264.31] Members wishing to speak, beginning with Mr. Zine.[1268.31][1268.31] Good morning, Barbara.[1270.31][1270.31] I noticed on the sheet it says...[1273.31][1273.31] As Chair of Committee, we had this this morning, I just was going to say what we
did in committee, and I don't know what the protocol is on that, but the protocol is to push a button, but I'll yield to you.[1286.31][1286.31] Thank you for yielding, yield for the good man.[1289.31][1289.31] Yield to Councilmember LeBonde looking for the alligator and the crocodiles.[1293.31][1293.31] All right, thank you.[1294.31][1294.31] Mr. Chairman.[1295.31][1295.31] Members, we all know Barbara Yaroslavsky, and we all know her commitment to making things right for people.[1301.31][1301.31] She has great experience, she's part of a very tremendous couple and her husband, but the strength, I believe, comes a lot from you, Barbara, how you've always fought for people, and to be on this commission, which Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Perry, I heard your comments this morning, and you're going to bring a lot of energy and influence and voice to this commission, so our committee unanimously recommended Barbara Yaroslavsky for children, youth, and their families.[1330.31][1330.31] I thank you, and I thank you, Mr. Zine, for yielding your time for me as the committee chair for that.[1336.31][1336.31] Thank you, Mr. President.[1337.31][1337.31] Mr. Zine.[1338.31][1338.31] Thank you.[1339.31][1339.31] I see there's a critter on the Councilmember Han's desk.[1344.31][1344.31] We'll get to that later, I guess.[1347.31][1347.31] Thank goodness it's stuffed.[1349.31][1349.31] Oh, it is?[1350.31][1350.31] I didn't know if it was real or if it was just sleeping.[1354.31][1354.31] The sheet that I have says there's no backup material, but we don't need backup material...
Those are approved, oh, excuse me, those are ordinances and carryover for second readings. Next items, please.
Next item is item number nine. It's also a public hearing item, and the recommendation for council action would be to continue the hearing and ordinance to October 11th.
Members, item number nine now before us, and I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on item number nine. Public hearing is open, and without objection, continued to October 11th. Next item.
Item number 10 is a public hearing item, and that's a street vacation in Council District Five, and I believe there's a request to continue that matter.
Okay. A request to continue, colleagues, any objection? Seeing none, when's the new hearing date?
The new hearing date is 45 days, and that's October 28th.
Okay. Item 10 is continued. Next items, please.
Next items, 11 through 25, are items for which public hearings have been held. Item 11 is confirmation of a commissioner. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Let's hold item 11 on the desk, but it will be the first item we take up when we come back to items called specials. Leaving items 12 through 25, members, public hearing has been held on these items in committee. A motion would be required to reopen the public hearings. If there's no such motion, specials, beginning with Mr. Reyes. Counselor Burden, item number 12, please. 12 called special by Mr. Reyes, Ms. Grohl.
It's going to be 12 for Mr. Weiss, and he needs to add something for Mr. Weiss, so I'll follow.
Okay, Mr. Smith. 17 called special by Mr. Smith, Mr. Parks.
Mr. Chair, I asked that we move the Budget and Finance Report for number 15.
Item 15, we have a motion to move the Budget and Finance Committee report. Mr. Garcetti.
19, if we can continue for one week, please.
Any objection, colleagues? Seeing none, item 19 is continued. Mr. Cardenas.
21 special.
21 called special by Mr. Cardenas. Any other specials? Colleagues, on members 12 through 25, if there's no further requests for specials, let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Items 13 and 14 are ordinances and are approved on first reading. We now have 12 members present, colleagues. Mr. Sign moves reconsideration of items one through six and number eight. Let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those ordinances are back before us, and let's reopen the roll on those items, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those ordinances are now approved on first reading. Next items, please.
Next items are items 26 through 92, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
26 through 92 now before us, and I do have a card on item 26. We'll call that special to hear from members of the public. On the balance of the items, I do not have speaker cards. Those public hearings are open and closed. Request for specials, 26 through 92. Mr. Parks.
Eighty-three special.
Eighty-three called special by Mr. Parks. Mr. Garcetti.
On 91, I would ask that as part of consent, we assert jurisdiction and send that back to Plumb.
After we assert jurisdiction?
Yeah, we can either do it separately or as a consent, but under Prop. 245. Okay, then I'd move that we Prop. 245 that and send that back to Plumb, please.
Okay, let's take a separate vote on item 91. Let's open the roll on item 91, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
So jurisdiction has been asserted and referred to the Plumb Committee. On the balance of items 26 through 92, colleagues, any other specials? There's no further specials, then let's open the roll on the balance of the items, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next items, please.
Next item on the supplemental agenda, item number 93, that is Transportation Committee Report and an amending motion and new ordinance is also included on that.
Okay, and those have been properly either agendas or distributed?
Yes, it has.
Okay, colleagues, item 93 now before us. Public hearing has been held in committee on this item. Motion would be required to reopen the public hearing. Any request to call item 93 special? Any request to call item 93 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on item 93, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Items 94 and 95 are also items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Members, items 94 and 95 now before us, and I do not have requests for members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open and closed. Request to call these items special? Seeing none, let's open the roll on 94 and 95, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
That would take council back to the items called special, and the first item, I believe, is the confirmation, Ms. Barbara Yaroslavsky, and that's item number 11.
Okay. If Ms. Yaroslavsky would please come forward to the center table. Colleagues, we have item number 11 before us, confirmation of a nominee to the Commission on Children, Youth, and Their Families. Members wishing to speak, beginning with Mr. Sign.
Good morning, Barbara. I notice on the sheet it says...
As Chair of Committee, we had this this morning. I just was going to say what we did in committee, and I don't know what the protocol is on that, but...
The protocol is to push a button, but I'll yield to you.
Thank you for yielding. Yield for the good man.
Yield to Councilmember LeBonde, looking for the alligator and the crocodiles.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Members, we all know Barbara Yaroslavsky, and we all know her commitment to making things right for people. She has great experience. She's part of a very tremendous couple and her husband, but the strength, I believe, comes a lot from you, Barbara, how you've always fought for people and to be on this commission, which Mr. Garcetti and Ms. Perry, I heard your comments this morning, and you're going to bring a lot of energy and influence and voice to this commission. So our committee unanimously recommended Barbara Yaroslavsky for children, youth, and their families. I thank you, and I thank you, Mr. Sign, for yielding your time for me as a committee chair for that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Sign.
Thank you. I see there's a critter on the Councilmember Han's desk. We'll get to that later, I guess.
Thank goodness it's stuffed.
Oh, it is? I didn't know if it was real or if it was just sleeping. The sheet that I have says there's no backup material, but we don't need backup material because we know what you do, we know your dedication, we know your husband dedication to the city, to this county, what you have done in the past. I see you at many events, and I think that the fact that your children have gone far in this world in education as stellar members of the communities, so I just want to give my solid stamp of approval. I know that you do well with that commission, and all of the activities you do with the medical field, helping with all these other activities you're involved in, I know you don't need more on your plate, but your involvement in that is really the involvement in our future because children, youth, and the family is the foundation to have a better society and to keep our kids out of jail, off of drugs, out of gangs, so it's very, very important, commission. I just want to congratulate you, and it was interesting, when normally we have backup material, we don't need backup material because we know how wonderful you are and all the dedication that you have, so I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendale.
Yes, I just wanted to echo my colleague's comments, and Barbara, I've known you for a long time, and you know, you're a citizen servant, somebody that's giving back at this point in your life, and I'm delighted for that. I'm also Chair of the Education and Neighborhood Council Committee, and I'd like you to come before my committee, once this is all put together, and share with us some of your vision and where you want to go, but if you could tell us now why you accepted this appointment and what you hope to accomplish.
Thank you, Councilman Rosendale. I feel that what I bring to the table is an opportunity for those voices that are not able to be heard to be heard and to have value and to have impetus, and I think I've spent my life trying to make sure that if it were the underserved needs of those without medical insurance or those students underserved by teacher-student ratio or after-school kids with a place to go that's safe, and it's issues that I have brought and tried to make part of my life and part of the fabric of who our family is, and that is to be involved and engaged in our community and to try and make it a better place based on who we are and our giving back to the community.
You know, I know the President of the Council and the Council and the mayor have formed a Commission on Education, and when I was a candidate for office just a couple of months ago, the number one issue, as I was talking constituents, ringing doorbells, was education. There's a frustration about our education system, and I look forward to your leadership and help diffuse that, and I look forward to you coming before my table.
My pleasure, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grohl. Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I saw Ms. Yaroslavsky earlier this morning and said, "Am I supposed to vote for you today?" And she kind of said, "Well, if you think it's right." But we talked about Barbara being one of those people who is going to challenge the department, is going to make sure, challenge the LA Unified School District to make sure that those facilities that they operate and own are shared, as we do, all of our facilities with LAUSD, that those schools are a community center, not just a school from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And I know that the department is also looking at the children's budget and how much we spend in the city of Los Angeles on children's issues and what we can do, where we can actually do more, whether it be through recreational parks, through LAPD, whatever department, our community development department. So I know that you have intricate knowledge, not only of the city of Los Angeles, but county issues and children's issues, that are going to be a great advocate, and I'm just thrilled that the mayor appointed you. Thank you. And that it seems like you're going to get approved today by our council, but we encourage you to come and talk to us. Too often, and I know this is not your MO, but commissioners go off and they do the thing and never come back to us and say, "Here's how you can be helpful legislatively" or using the bully pulpit, and I think we have a commitment around this table, and with your knowledge as LA's best and participation there, it's really going to be an asset to this commission. So I look forward to you coming back to us and telling us what more we need to do to help serve our children. And there's one issue that's particularly important to me is the childcare policy that this council adopted in concept, and now we have to put the real meat on the bones to make sure we have our departments implement that. So I'll be looking up to you, and I know that our council president has engaged them in a youth policy and how important that is to get the youth part of what's going to happen to the future of the city. So some challenges you have, but I know you're up to the task and look forward to your active participation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I rise in enthusiastic support, Barbara, for your... First of all, thank you for your willingness to serve. This truly is a commitment, this truly is public service, serving on this commission. And one of the things I know because of your background and because just of your advocacy on behalf of so many issues for a long time, one of the things I'd even like to hear you talk about this morning, I feel that our young people, besides education, besides schools, besides, you know, really making sure they have opportunities for good choices, I think our young people feel disconnected from government, and I feel our young people are disconnected from the process of sort of having a voice in government. And I know in Los Angeles neighborhood councils certainly are one of the vehicles for having a voice in the process of government, but we've yet to see a real participation from young people throughout the city of Los Angeles in their neighborhood councils, and a few of them have, one or two maybe young people sitting on their neighborhood councils, but I was wondering if you had any thoughts about how we might reconnect our kids to government and to the process of what we do down here and voting and those kinds of issues. I'd love to hear your thoughts on that, but I wholeheartedly recommend you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Perry. I have to tell you that I think there's been a major hole in our educational system, one that does not teach civics appropriately in the public school system. I don't think kids understand what it means to be an active participant. I know that I worked two years past with Councilman Garcetti on a youth convention that we did out at Oxon College, where we brought some of our city's young people together with an opportunity to understand what a convention means, what the process of participating in a convention meant. I think there are organizations out there, like the Constitutional Rights Foundation, a nonprofit organization that tries to engage our kids in programs such as the mock trial orientation as well as civics programs. There's lots of organizations, but unfortunately, I think with everything that the school district, I guess, needs or things that they need to be engaged in, civics has not been one of those issues. So I would venture say that when the children in fourth grade are doing a lesson, what is, what are the symbols of the California flag? That might be the only connection, and that's between them and the library or a person on the other end of the telephone as to what do those symbols mean, or what does a symbol mean on anything to do with government. So I think that what we need to do is to look to a very good resource, and that is our actual, our school district and our school board members, to see what are they going to do to help partner with us and do collaborative, get them engaged. I would venture to say that from my own experience, neighborhood councils and youth is maybe not the best marriage because I would hope that kids are going to sleep at a decent hour so they can get up early enough to make those buses at 6:00 in the morning, and that they probably have too much homework to do because homework is now sometimes a vehicle for education, learning, teaching versus classroom activities. So I can commend your recommendation that neighborhood councils are there, but it's only one of the many opportunities that kids should use and families need to use to reengage in what the process is, and people need to understand and kids need to understand that they can make a difference. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Reyes.
I also rise to support Mr. Rosalesky for her empowerment, but I wanted to just get from you, how do you see us using this commission to address the needs of those neighborhoods that essentially are living over private conditions, where kids don't have a desk to sit in, where they even have a hard time walking through the hallways? The breakdown in playgrounds because of the presence of gang violence and the lack of police, just because we don't have enough of policing available, the lack of accessibility to mentors that can teach them how to get from point A to point B in their career? Can you just, I'm given some pretty hard, but real circumstances that our young people find ourselves at least in half of the city. Can you just address those issues and how you see your role in the commission in trying to address those types of concerns?
I think the issues that you raise now are issues that I've always been engaged and involved in personally, personally, professionally, professionally, without a salary, but professionally as far as advocacy. And I think that my work with LA's best has shown me better than most because I visit those schools and I know what those kids are going through, and I understand, I think, clearly what the opportunities of making communities out of these neighborhoods are, that be it a need for healthcare, be it a need for after-school programs, be it a need that the libraries might even be left open after school with staffing available for kids that might want to use it, might be a novel thing also. Housing is a major issue and how we build housing within a community and how we make sure it's available. When I look at what's going on now in the South, in the Gulf states, where families are starting to be moved slowly into apartments, but they have no refrigerator and they have no beds, they have no bookshelves, they have no, they have no nothing, but they do have a dry place to stay and how they're going to be able to build their lives, they're no different than what we have to look at to what we want LA to be. LA can be a greater city, and it only is going to be a greater city if we all realize that we all have to be at the table. I think that what I bring to this commission is the ability to sit at the table, not in the same conditions that you've mentioned, but to realize and appreciate and understand that those conditions do exist, but not being willing to tolerate it and not being willing to let it pass me by as if it doesn't exist in my face and in my heart. So to that, I can guarantee you that I will be a vocal advocate for making LA a better place to live because I agree with the council, I agree with the mayor, that this city can only be better if they can't go any other way, and if we don't get behind it now, we've missed an opportunity.
In your experience in working with these groups, you speak to the role of the parents and how their interaction has made a change? Do you have some perspective in that regard?
I have been PTA president of my kid's school not once but twice. I've been president of Board of Regents. I understand that parents need to be involved to make their kids' lives better. I understand also that not all parents have, can afford the opportunity of time or leaving the workplace in order to do so. So maybe there needs to be an opportunity for more flexible work-time schedule, meeting time schedule, but in the end, we have to depend on the players at the table, and if it means giving rise to more opportunities to put people in the schools, then we're going to have to do it. I have friends that are teachers that will tell you that bar none, it doesn't matter what, if you don't have the parent's support, you're not going to get the kids to school. I have to believe that that may be for most kids, but on the other hand, kids don't know that it's different not to have their mom at meetings or their dad at meetings, but teachers know, and teachers have got to be in a position, we've got to give them the respect they deserve, the money they need, and the tools to do their trade, and if it means they're going to have to do more, then they're going to have to do more.
I want to thank you for those answers, and I appreciate the insight you offer, and I hope that those that are listening to this dialogue realize that we do have folks at the commission that will understand the whole spectrum of issues that affect the spectrum of incomes and the poverty levels that do impact our quality of life, and I want to thank you for that dedication. We're committed to our public service. Thank you so much.
Mr. Parks.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
I'm fine.
I just want to say thank you for putting yourself up for this volunteer service. The one area I'd like to ask you to concentrate on, and it's, I think, one of the most important jobs that that commission does, is it actually evaluates and tracks all of the money that the city spends dealing with the issues of youth and families, and I think the last time I checked, it's well over 500 million dollars. And one of the things that would be helpful is that not only that we track and see how departments are spending it, but also we hope to exert ourselves and begin to see how well we coordinate these services so that we're not replicating, but at some point in our history, we'd like to see if whether the commission could take on the responsibility of being able to grade and evaluate these services, so it would make it a little easier for us in the budget process to know where we should be spending our money, what should be priorities, where do we get the best return on investment. And it's been a 10-year process, a 10-year process of moving forward to get to the point we are today. And I would not like to lose momentum. We saw recently that Mr. Ludlow put together an ad hoc committee on games, and one of the messages that came out was the lack of coordination, the different criteria, the lack of understanding in terms of what each department is doing, and yet we know we're spending a lot of money in these areas, but yet we may not get a multiplier effect by making sure that they're complementing each other. And so that's the one issue I'd ask that you take on as a charge because it would be invaluable for the whole city, and also be invaluable as to looking at how we're spending our resources. And I think all of the other issues in your background are appropriate for this type of commission, but it's an important task of moving that commission to the next level of how they may impact the entire city.
Thank you. Very interesting idea. We're proud of your services.
Mr. Cardenas. Thank you very much. Thank you, Barbara, for giving up your precious time for the children and families of Los Angeles, and those of us who know you, know your record and your willingness to do that for decades so far. We hope that you'll be on this commission for a long time, your services are badly needed, and as Councilmember Parks is mentioning, we need to get a little bit more sophisticated about what we're doing and why we're doing what we're doing. I'd like to point something out that I think that you're very well aware of, and that is that when we think about children, and for example, latchkey children, and what's going on with parents who have to work and not supervising their kids, and then pregnancies occurs or delinquency activities, but also, another thing that, when it comes to having proper adult supervision, it has to do with simple things, like what are these kids eating? Diabetes being the number one, you know, preventable cost to the public, to tax dollars and also to human costs when it comes to lives and lifestyles, et cetera. I want to ask you, what kind of things can we do this city in coordination with the county and you have contacts with the county that you can rely on to make sure that we do coordinate together? Because when it comes to health care, really, the county is really saddled with those primary responsibilities. We all have that responsibility, but it's really the county that is responsible directly for most of our clinics and health care, federal health care dollars come through the state or directly to the county. What can we do to make sure that we're coordinating properly and being efficient with what we're doing as a city to educate families and parents and what is out there for them, such as the services at the county?
Thank you, Councilman. I think it's very important to remember that I think that this commission is looking at its role as being a coordinator of information, which is very important. I've sat on the Board of the LA Free Clinic for probably 25, 30 years now. I used to be an active volunteer there, and I'm well aware of the needs of the community as far as the lack of opportunities to make themselves available to basic medical care. A kid coming into school, be it with new infection or a fever, is not going to be a kid that's going to stay in class, they're going to fall behind, and they're going to get in trouble. And I can remember myself being at school one day and seeing a kid pass out in nutrition line, and the first person it was called was law enforcement, wasn't the doctor, it was law enforcement, because the assumption was the kid was taking drugs in middle school. A kid that was passed out because of a diabetic coma. So I've ventured to say that the state now, in all due fairness, has a commission going forward with the governor addressing the needs specifically of diabetes and obesity in our schools. The county is very involved and active, and I would use all of my connections to make it happen. I think that regardless of who has oversight to make sure that the process goes forward, I think this commission has oversight, making sure that our families and our kids are engaged in process, so that it's health affairs in the neighborhoods and the communities and partnering with council persons or the county or the state to give that message out, if it means reviewing what kids are being served at nutrition, whatever it takes to make it happen, I think that this commission, you will see, will be a strong voice and a strong advocate as well as a partner with this elected body here.
Well, once again, thank you, Barbara, for bringing your vast talent and knowledge to the table, and I know you use whatever resources you have with the county to get their attention if you have to.
Yeah, I've got an attitude, Matt. I know some people over there.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Other members of the council wishing to speak? If not, then I think we're ready for our votes. Let's open the roll. Take a deep breath, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you for serving the city. Forthwith on that item, please. Next item. Mr. Garcetti.
Just want to, if we could reconsider number 86 for Council District 14.
federal healthcare dollars come through the state or directly to the county. What can we do to make sure that we're coordinating properly and being efficient with what we're doing as a city to educate families and parents and what is out there for them, such as the services at the county? Thank you, Councilman. I think it's very important to remember that I think that this commission is looking at its role as being a coordinator of information, which is very important. I've sat on the board of the LA Free Clinic for probably 25, 30 years now. I used to be an active volunteer there. And I'm well aware of the needs of the community as far as the lack of opportunities to make themselves available to basic medical care. A kid coming into school, be it with new infection or a fever, is not going to be a kid that's going to stay in class, they're going to fall behind, and they're going to get in trouble. And I can remember myself being at school one day and seeing a kid pass out in nutrition line. And the first person it was called was law enforcement. It wasn't the doctor, it was law enforcement because the assumption was the kid was taking drugs in middle school. A kid that was passed out because of a diabetic coma. So I'm interested that the state now, in all due fairness, has a commission going forward with the governor addressing the needs specifically of diabetes and obesity in our schools. The county was very involved and active, and I would use all of my connections to make it happen. I think that regardless of who has oversight to make sure that the process goes forward, I think this commission has oversight to make sure that our families and our kids are engaged in the process. So it's health affairs in the neighborhoods and the communities and partnering with council persons or the county or the state to give that message out. If it means reviewing what kids are being served at nutrition, whatever it takes to make it happen, I think that this commission, you will see, will be a strong voice and a strong advocate, as well as a partner with this elected body here.
Well, once again, thank you Barbara for bringing your vast talent and knowledge to the table. And I know you use whatever resources you have with the county to get their attention if you have to.
Yeah, I've got an attitude. I know some people over there.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. Other members of the council wish to speak? If not, then I think we're ready for our votes. Let's open the roll. Take a deep breath. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you for serving the city. Forthwith on that item, please. Next item. Mr. Garcetti?
Just want to, if we could reconsider number 86 for council district 14. I was informed by the CLA to prepare an amended motion for that.
Okay, let's open the roll. Reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
86 is reconsidered and is the amended motion ready or do we need to continue?
I believe that, why don't we hold it on the desk right now?
Okay. Call it special by Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Parks?
Mr. President, could I ask that we get 83 out of order? We have a couple of detectives here on the clock and a couple of community residents that would like to comment on this reward motion.
Any objection, colleagues? Seeing none, let's take item 83 out of order. We do have a couple of speaker cards that have been submitted since this item was called special. Sharonda Stratford followed by Detective John Ratkey. If you would please come forward.
Yes, we have two detectives. Detective Ratkey is the lead detective and his partner is Detective Martin. And they are the investigators on the case for Southwest homicide. We also have Sharonda Stratford, the guardian, and also Abia Stratford, who's the grandmother here.
I'm the lead investigator on a homicide that occurred at the 1400 block of West 46th Street. This occurred on May 11th of 2005 at about 9:35 PM. Eighteen-year-old Lakendra Dickerson, an innocent girl, was just walking to a neighbor's house when a drive-by shooting occurred. Two male Hispanics fired from a tan vehicle in the direction of Ms. Dickerson and a couple other men that were out in the general area. Ms. Dickerson ran away, you know, trying to escape the fire. Unfortunately, she was struck and she died from the injuries. We need the council's help and we need the community's help in finding witnesses to this crime so that we can take these dangerous killers off the street.
Thank you. Mr. Stratford? I am the aunt of Lakendra Dickerson. I'm just asking for one to help us find the person who murdered my niece so that I can get some closure.
Colleagues, the grandmother, Ms. Stratford, would you like?
Yes, I'm the grandmother and it's very painful. I know somebody's seen something and somebody knows something. So you need to come forward and let the detectives know. Thank you.
And for the viewing public, I'd like to just show that photograph of the young lady of Ms. Dickerson that was killed, just the innocent bystander on the streets of the city of LA. And certainly from the voices of those who are here, from the family members, you can see the stress that they're under. We just would like to give the detective as much aid as we can to bring this case to closure. So I'd ask that we get an a vote on item 83. Southwest detective. Oh, let me. Other members of the council wish to speak on this item? We're not on number 11, ma'am.
And one item, let me just give the phone number for the public for the homicide unit. It's 213-451-383.
On item 83, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
General public comment for today's meeting. We do have a couple of speaker cards. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on matters within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda. Council calls forward Ted Hayes, followed by Donna Doherty, Scott Milborn, and Candido Please come forward. Ted Hayes, Donna Doherty, Scott Milborn, and Candido Maris. Going once, going twice.
Good morning, everybody, Mr. President and fellow council members. I'm here again to ask about the Griffith Observatory. And I'm not sure everybody, I'm hearing that people are hearing this outside in the community, and I'm very appreciative of that. I'm hoping that everybody out there knows that we're up to almost 90 million on this renovation, and this is mostly our money, but there is state and federal money involved in this. And we're not getting any access at the front of the building, nothing. And there definitely should be, I don't know whether you can see that from the TV cameras, but it's a, this is from the Recreation and Parks Department. There's a circle around the front steps, and then it shows all the dotted lines going out to the ends of the wings around the backside, and you have to come the whole length of the wing to the front four doors on the inside. This is not right. And then down at the bottom, it says, "This is the path the disabled will follow." We put a sign like that on the front lawn of that observatory when it opens, and we will have lawsuits up and down the hall. Anyway, we don't need to do that. We can make it accessible, and all of us should be working for that. I ask you once more to put this on the agenda for the whole council. We've diddled and doddled along here for so long now, six years almost, asking for access up there. And how can you do this? How can you, we're just talking about what can we do for the teachers and the students in this community? Make it accessible. They've been mainstreaming disabled children for two to three years now. And what's a teacher supposed to do if they have one in the class that's disabled? Tell 34 of them to wait at the front door for the teacher while the one is taken around to the end of the wing, or take all 35 in one door?
Thank you, ma'am. Let me ask you to conclude so we can hear from other speakers.
We're just, we're creating a problem up there, and that's the one thing we're trying to avoid here in view of all the other problems going on in the United States. This is something that we need to look at in terms of civil disaster too. Can we get everybody out? And I don't think so, not out the front door there where we should have it accessible. I thank you all, and please, I'm hoping that we can get it on the agenda and get something happening up there, please. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. 365 days a year, the Department of Water Power, the hardworking people at DWP provide us with service. Yesterday was a fluke. I want people to remember that each and every day, these people go out and try to make, give us the best service we can receive. So I was a little disappointed in the Daily News and their article, but remember, DWP workers are some of the best in the country. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have speaker cards from Ted Hayes and Scott Milborn. Are you still here?
Thank you, Mr. President and council members. I'm Scott Milborn. I'm the program manager with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority, and I was here to speak in conjunction with Mr. Hayes. I don't see in the, in the room right now, so I would actually withdraw my request to speak at this time.
Okay. Then this concludes the general public comment for today's meeting. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number 12, and that was called special by Council Member Reyes.
Mr. Rosenbaum, do you wish to say something before taking this item up?
Administrative thing, I would like us to reconsider item 93 so that we can hear from a number of citizens who have come to speak. I realize that the issue has already had public comment, but I would want them to be heard and to have their voices heard, if we could do that.
Okay. Any objection to reconsidering item 93? Seeing none, let's open the roll and reconsideration. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, 93 is reconsidered, and we'll call it special for Mr. Rosenbaum. Item number 12, colleagues, now before us, and Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Colleagues, I call this special. This is another leg within the city. We deal with airport and transit issues. The Van Nuys Airport Master Plan is a critical piece in how we sustain the three legs, the stool, if we call, and how we transport goods and individuals, people in and out of this region. While this Van Nuys Master Plan, what it does, it talks about how we focus on those markets that deal with general aviation. What we're doing is we're allowing for a presence of general aviation business, which in fact alleviates pressures in the LAX International Airport. So in a way, there is a connection in terms of how we enhance our airport and transit needs. These amendments are technical amendments that allows us to move forward on some lease conditions we have with some of the tenants on the site. But before I go any further, I wanted to ask our planning officials and LAW officials, if they would give us just a brief summary of what these actions will do. I thought it was important that we all understand as a body what this master plan is doing in the context of the regional pressures we're going through as we go through the LAX master plan issues. So I thought it was important that we have this type of understanding, given the importance and significance of this particular element within our infrastructure. Mr. Gordon?
Gordon Hamilton, Department of City Planning. These are amendments to the general plan, but these are amendments that would implement a master plan, a plan that has been in the works for over 10 years with the Van Nuys Airport Citizens Advisory Council, the staff of LAW, and the Planning Department, working with the community to develop this plan. The plan before you is Alternative J. We're pretty far down in the alphabet. You can see that there have been a lot of discussion and a lot of alternatives and modifications to get to this point. Alternative J is a 730-acre general aviation airport plan, which would set aside 197 acres for aviation purposes. 38 acres of those would be set aside for propeller planes, and 15 acres would be set aside for the fire department and air operations and DWP aviation activities. This is a balanced plan that would allow for the orderly development of the airport over the, up until the year 2015. And it would allow for the slight expansion of jet operations and the preservation of the propeller planes. We've heard over the years that that was one of the primary concerns in the community is the preservation of the propeller planes, and this plan will accomplish that. There is also an accompanying environmental document, and in the environmental document, it was determined that the significant impacts would be air quality on a temporary basis, traffic, which is mitigated as part of the mitigation plans from the expansion of the operation, but largely the issue is noise. And what you'll see in the plan is that we are largely preempted from mitigating the noise impact due to the FAA requirements. There are recommendations that you'll hear today that will address in large part the issues of noise, but we have taken it as far as we can as a local land use plan. So again, we'll have amendments to the Reseda Plan, to the Mission Hills Plan, and the Northridge Plan, and those amendments will be implemented by the zone changes and the corresponding queue conditions, which will be used to guide the development of the airport over the next 10 years.
Jim Ritchie, LA World Airports, thank you. Councilman Reyes, you're absolutely correct. This is another important component of this city's airport system, the modernizations of all of our airports to include Ontario and Palmdale. This has been a long time coming. It represents broad outreach. It's a key component of the general aviation piece that affects all of the region's airports to include LAX. So we're excited to be here today to bring closure to this important piece and believe that it certainly represents outreach throughout the city of Los Angeles and makes an important contribution to the regional airport system.
I think it's crucial, Mr. Ritchie, is that because of term limits, it's hard to grasp for many of us, the role of each entity within our airport transportation infrastructure. But I would like to ask if you can have your staff essentially brief my office in terms of what the four pieces are looking like, what are they evolving into, given that we have many components to the LAX site, but we have other opportunities throughout the three other airports. And so I want to get a feel for, okay, where is this going? How are the four interacting together? Today's actions, what it will do? I do understand, and I want to thank my colleagues, they have been working hard with their amendments and trying to deal with the noise issue, the negative impacts. At the same time, there's a balancing act we go through when neighborhoods are affected, yet we have a regional need. We have a city need, and we have a national role in trade and how we bring people back and forth throughout the country. So that's a balancing act that we need to go through, but I need to understand what the four airports are looking like, what are they going through from a land use point of view, and as much as the impacts it has in our cities. So I would appreciate that perspective as well.
Yes, sir, we'll be glad to do that.
Thank you so much. And thank you, colleagues, those of you who've been with me on the, on the committee. We've been going through this, and I appreciate your input, the amendments that came forward that address the priorities of the local communities that are being impacted by this action. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your diligence, Councilman Reyes. Planning issues are something you know a lot about, and whether it's an airport or an apartment complex or a street improvement, I appreciate you weighing in on this. Also, I'd like to thank Jack Weiss for working with our offices to make sure that these amendments are all in order. There have been many, many people who've been working on this for many years, and I'd like to ask Kobe King to come forward, who's head of the Community Action Committee on this matter. You can come sit at the table, Kobe. No, there's room for him over here. It's fine. The reason why I say that is because whenever we see late amendments on a process that's been taken over 13 years, people get nervous, and rightfully so. So we pulled it back a little bit, made sure that everything was fine, and basically these amendments clarify what the true intent of the council is and how strong we feel about making sure that Alternative J actually gets off the ground and it's implemented properly. Kobe, can you give us at least a little bit of background so the community and all of us can appreciate how much work went into this, this over 10-year process by the community?
Well, thank you, Councilman, I appreciate that. I'm Kobe King, 237, 200 Posey Lane in West Hills. I've been chair of the Van Nuys Airport Citizens Advisory Council since 2000. I'd like to just start by reminding the council of a date, April 1st, 1992. That's the date when this council enacted a motion by then-councilman Wax to ask the airport department to prepare a new master plan for Van Nuys. I have wondered a number of times over the years since then whether or not that was a rather cruel April fool's joke, but in any case, here we are today, and I'm very pleased. This council, as I'm sure you know, had 15 different faces back then, but this plan over the last number of years has evolved. It was first proposed and adopted by the CAC more than two and a half years ago, and since then, it has gone through a number of other amendments. And again, I certainly want to thank Councilman Weiss's office for that. The, the plan now enjoys widespread support throughout the community, both from the CAC, Valley Industry Commerce Association, leadership of the homeowners associations in both Sherman Oaks and Encino. And as the council prepares to act today, I do want to make sure that many people that recognize the gentleman at this table have all done unbelievable yeoman's work to work with the city council offices, to work with the CAC. The CAC in particular, Don Schultz, Harold Lee, and Bruce Ackerman have worked very hard to make sure this happens. And I also want to make sure that I thank personally and very much from the bottom of my heart, Councilman Tony Cardenas, his chief of staff, Jose Cornejo. They, together and especially with the leadership of the councilmen, have really made sure that this thing got going. Without their leadership, there is no way that we'd be here today. So I want to personally and publicly thank the councilmen. It's, it's been a long road. We're almost there, and I'm just very pleased. I want to thank everybody who helped.
What was the final citizens invited to the council's vote on the Alternative J, the last time they took a vote on it?
Well, the last time that...
On the plan itself?
On the plan itself. When we took a vote in 2003, and there have been a number of votes reaffirming our support for that, it, it has been pretty consistently about 12 votes in favor and two against. Since then, the, one of those votes has switched to support for, in favor of Alternative J. And, and so I feel that based on those votes and a number of other votes that have occurred since then, it still enjoys widespread support at the CAC.
Okay, good. The reason why I wanted to point that out is because it's called Alternative J because they went through Alternative A, B, C, D, E, F over these many years. So we're talking about a work product that's not perfect. There's no such thing as a perfect work product that makes everybody happy, but this is something that did include the community. It did make sure that LAW understood what their job was going to be once Alternative J was approved. It did take into account, that's why I went through the planning committee, it did make, and the planning process, make sure that it had the planning authority that it should have and the scrutiny that it did have. So the reason why I'm pointing this out is because it's a very laborious process, and one thing that I made at my personal omission, now that before I got here, there was redistricting that was done. Before that, many different council members had a piece of the airport here, a piece of the airport there. I'm glad to say that this airport is now in the sixth council district because then there's less room... there's less room for excuses. I'm going to be blunt, there's less room for excuses, and I made it my mission to make sure that Alternative J, now that the community had a 12 to 2 vote, that it did move forward and make sure that in real time, this year in 2005, we did get this process done. So equally important to these amendments is the fact that we are finalizing the process through the council on Alternative J, so now Lawa can do their job. And my job isn't over either. My job is to make sure that LA World Airports and Van Nuys Airport, in fact, follow the master plan, implement the master plan, and do the job right. Because right now, it's a shame that the busiest general aviation airport in the country, supposedly operates under budget. It doesn't bring in enough revenue to even sustain itself. That just doesn't make sense. One of the reasons for that is because we have many pieces of land that are underutilized and also improperly utilized. Now that we have Alternative J, we can at minimum get them properly utilized. Hopefully, they'll be utilized to the proper degree, and it will be able to sustain itself. That's the right thing to do. This is an asset of the people of Los Angeles, and it should be used properly. Alternative J gives us the roadmap and the ability to do that. So I just want to thank the community, thank Lawa, thank my colleagues for bringing it to this point, to make sure that we now have a Van Nuys master plan that we can now work on, we can now implement, and make sure that we have good things happening at our Van Nuys Airport. Congratulations.
Ms. Gruehl.
Thank you, Mr. Bedea, and a special congratulations to Mr. Cardenas for moving this forward. I know it takes a lot of work. I represented the airport for about three months before redistricting and know how passionate and concerned both people who operate at the airport, but also, most importantly, the surrounding community that is impacted by that. So I want to echo what Kobe King said today in your leadership in making this actually happen because it was a key issue as we were trying to determine what was going to happen in the area to make sure that we had a plan, that we were going to move forward. I am standing up, my second part is standing up for Councilmember Weiss, who is not here today, who introduced a motion last week, which were amendments, and I just want to make a few comments for Mr. Weiss, which really demonstrate his commitment to comply with the federal law but to reduce the impacts to the surrounding communities. Councilmember Weiss worked with the community, the Encino, Community Council, homeowners of Encino, Sherman Oaks, homeowners association, neighborhood council, to support the amendments that are before us today. And two of them that he wanted me to highlight that are part of the amendments that were introduced last week and before us today. One is understanding that the Part 161 study is required by the FAA and that the FAA has the regular authority to review such studies and approve noise restrictions studied therein. It is the intent of the city to implement the noise control measures studied in the Part 161, and the city shall encourage the FAA to review and, as necessary, approve the city's Part 161 study, including a determination of acceptability or reasonableness of all noise control measures consistent with 49 USC numbers as outlined in the amendment. And then lastly, that the request that Lawa report to the Board of Airport Commissioners within 90 days of receiving FAA's response to the Part 161 study with recommendations that are aggressive to implement, implementation schedule for those noise control measures deemed acceptable or reasonable by the FAA. So I think this is a great day for the city to move forward to protect our neighborhoods and to protect a vital economic aspect of the San Fernando Valley. So thank you for all your leadership, and thank you for Mr. Weiss as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Mr. President. You know, first, I want to say that it's all about the citizens around airports that matter in the context of when we talk about noise and we talk about those issues. And I'm delighted, and I just want to restate, if you look on number two of the final page of this item 12, it says under A, "Understanding that Part 161 study is required by the FAA and that the FAA has the regulatory authority to review such studies and approve noise restriction studies therein. It is the intent of the city to implement the noise control measures studied in Part 161, and the city shall encourage the FAA to review and, as necessary, approve the city's Part 161 study." Could somebody explain to me what that means on the record?
Councilman Rosendahl, Jim Ritchie, again, I'll be glad-
Morning, Jim.
I'll do my best explaining the FAA and what the intent of Councilman Weiss's introduction of that language was, but at the completion of the FAA 161 study that has been initiated to the degree that those determinations on how they affect noise, any of the conclusions, whether there may be a curfew associated with that, we will certainly support that process as it goes forward. We will encourage the FAA, we will carry the message that we have heard here today to encourage the FAA to be supportive of that process, and at the conclusion of the FAA determination, we'll aggressively and quickly implement those decisions.
I appreciate you saying that, and I wanted that on the record because Wayne Williams, as Kobe King, leaders in the community, were strongly pushing for that through this whole process, and there was a lot of website interaction on that issue, and that's the community. I have just voted, you know, there is an election today, and anybody watching this in the 11th district, that is in the 53rd State Assembly District, that's Mar Vista and Westchester, Playa del Rey, and Venice, I want to encourage them to go to the polls. They're open until 8 o'clock for that assembly seat. But also, I would like us to begin to take a harder look at the Santa Monica Airport, which has FAA relationships plus LAX relationships, because we in Los Angeles get all the takeoffs, all the landings, all the noise, and I dare say, the idling of the jets puts all the pollution in both Mar Vista and West LA. And I would like us to take a look at that in the context of my district. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Are the members wishing to speak on this item? Mr. LeBaron.
Quick question, thinking when you said Santa Monica sparked the interest. Congratulations to all that work it so hard for 13 years on this. Van Nuys is number one in private aviation. That's number two.
Teterboro.
In private aviation.
Teterboro, I believe.
Teterboro, very good, Phil. That's a good, Phil the point. Good job, Phil, way to save Jim Ritchie. Jim, I just want to ask, because I know you mentioned Santa Monica, because I see the jets fly over Griffith Park in the morning, landing right into Santa Monica Airport, so it's not all LAX, Santa Monica, other areas throughout Southern California, but it all works together. Congratulations to everybody. Mr. Reyes, Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Weiss, Ms. Gruehl, and the LA Airport. And Kobe King, your king for doing all this work. Thank you.
Other members wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, Madam Crook, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Unanimous approval. Congratulations, Kobe. Thank you all. Colleagues, before proceeding to the next item on the agenda, we can welcome back Mr. Ted Hayes. He was outside of chambers when we called his name during general public comment. Mr. Hayes, come forward at this time.
Councilmembers. Councilmember Janice Hahn. I'm sorry about missing that. My apologies. Most of you have known me for 20 years in the community. Some of you better, know me better than others know me. And you know my commitment to resolving the issue of homelessness, particularly within our city and eventually throughout the whole country. We all know about what happened recently with Katrina hurricane and the suffering there, and now we're looking at a really strong need for housing, immediate, intermediate, and long-term housing. We have been financed on the LASA, LA Home Service Authority, to run what is considered the most innovative approach to homelessness in the modern Western world, and we've been there in downtown Los Angeles off the 110 freeway for now 12 years. We are here today, I'm here today, to help to make our city very proud in offering a very special gift to our government and to give to the people who have been affected by the hurricane, who have now been made homeless by the hundreds of thousands. We have the dome village in downtown, and we want to present that, but I need your help. I need your help to make our city proud. I need to get to Homeland Security. I have a lot of people working with us, manufacturers, in fact, I have a manufacturer telling me right now that we can, for example, if we order today a dome village, we could have a dome village up on the ground in two and a half to three weeks. But I need a passport. There's a lot of red tape, as you know, getting to the top levels of the Homeland, excuse me, a little nervous, Homeland Security. And if you, if you, the council of Los Angeles, could embrace me, embrace this concept of the dome village you present to our government, it would go a long way in my efforts. I'm going to the board supervisors as well to ask them for the same thing. This week at the Republican Convention, we're going to go down and put the dome up there and see if we can get Governor Schwarzenegger's attention to call the president and people high up in the administration to help us to get these domes on the ground to our people immediately, not only down there, but right here in Los Angeles as well. And one thing about the hurricane that it has done, it has raised the waters, so to speak, so that we can now look over and beyond our particular political views and differences and work together to help fellow Americans. That's why I'm here this morning. You've all been given a packet. You look inside of it, you see it pretty detailed at this point. So that's why I'm here.
Thank you. This concludes public comment for today. Ms. Hahn?
Yeah, I know it's public comment, so we're not allowed to act on anything that wasn't agendized, but I certainly think it's a great idea. We know how well these domes work here in Los Angeles, keeps those without shelter safe, away from the elements. I think it's a perfect solution for what's going on in Louisiana. I think, I know for myself, I'll be happy to contact my Congress member, Jane Harmon, and certainly make the recommendation that they open the doors to Dome Village as a really immediate solution to the terrible problem there. So, and I can't speak to my other council members, but I know that's something I'll be happy to do.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl.
I want to agree with my colleague, Janice Hahn, and if you look at the spheres, you see how incredibly equipped they are, and they certainly will give dignity and comfort, and they're inexpensive, and I greatly encourage us to look in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman President. Ms. Hahn, thank you very much.
Let me recognize Mr. Zine for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a short presentation. It's normally we bring people up with 40 years of service that are retiring from the city of Los Angeles, and this man's not retiring from the city of Los Angeles. While I know you're all upset about that, the criminals are upset about that, but the police officers are very pleased with that, and it says Detective Three Cliff Ruff, Los Angeles Police Department, and a director with the Police Protective League. And Cliff is celebrating 40 years with the Los Angeles Police Department, and I want to acknowledge with a certificate of commendation for all your hard work and dedication to the Los Angeles Police Department during your 40 years of service. Your efforts have been of great value to the citizens, to the city of Los Angeles. Best wishes and continued success. And this is signed by our mayor and by one of your former partners. So congratulations to Detective Three Cliff Ruff, who I'm sure is going to be around for a little bit longer, not retiring today, but 40 years with the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations, Cliff. Couple words from you.
Well, first, from Mr. Rosendahl. I wanted to second this that my colleague did. Cliff is an incredible public servant. I hope you stay with us another 20 years. I've gotten to know you over the last 18 months, and I like your integrity, your honesty, your discipline, and your commitment to making the world a better place, and I'm glad that you've spent the 40 years with us here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Just to say, it's been a real pleasure. I also set the other record of 16 years at the Protective League. I'm the longest-serving director there, so I can't tell you what a pleasure it is everyone in the horseshoe here that, to work with you and to be around you and Tony. We started out together over in Pacoima, and Alex, same thing, Pacoima's produced mighty fine people here, and Chief Parks and I have known each other for a multitude of years, worked together quite amicably, too. So it's just an honor to be a member of the city and to be able to work with all of you so well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Cliff, for everything you do. Colleagues, item 86, I understand there's a request to put that over for one day. If there's no objection, let's continue item 86 to tomorrow's meeting and take up the next item. Or actually, a request to take special one up at this time. Has that been circulated?
Yes, it has, Mr. President, and that was introduced by Councilmember Cardenas. And the city attorney will speak to the findings.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion. Since the posting of today's agenda, a wide area of Los Angeles was stricken with a power outage. Immediate action is required for staff to explain the outage and to allay any concerns that the public may have concerning the health of the city's power infrastructure. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2B before consideration of the substantive motion.
Members wishing to speak on the findings? On the findings, seeing none, let's open the roll on the findings for special one. Madam Crook, please close the roll and tabulate the vote. Okay, special one now before us on the motion itself. Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. How did you know I was going to call you up to the table? I'd like to start off, please, by letting the public know who is at the table. Can you start out with the general manager, Ron?
My name is Ron Deaton, general manager of the Department of Water and Power. Henry Martinez, Chief Operating Officer, Department of Water and Power.
The entire?
Well, Chief Operating Officer for Power.
The power side, not the water side, the power side.
Robert Rosansky, Chief Administrative Officer.
Okay, thank you very much for coming here today to the findings earlier. I just wanted to make sure that the people understood, the reason why we have everyone here today, or at least the key people at the department, is to inform the public to make sure the truth is set straight, at least from today, and then forward, and also let the public know, what can you do as a department to make sure things happen perhaps a little differently and better? Rather than repeat what I've heard, the reasons why this outage happened, I'd like you to answer to that question, as to why the outage happened, and in the process, please let us know. I had a lot of concerns from the public that were saying, what's going on, what's going on? And around about a couple hours later, pretty much most of the truth that people needed to know was out there. One of the things that concerned me the most, there was an unfortunate incident and coincidence was that within 24 hours of this power outage, there was someone that was widely advertised on the radio and on other mediums, saying that there was some kind of terrorist act coming to the city of Los Angeles, and all of a sudden half the city's out of power. I think it would have been very important for the department to let the public know early on that it turned out it was human error and it wasn't a terrorist act. Can you please share with us what you're going to do in the future to make sure that people aren't concerned or worried or trying to rush across town with no light signals, trying to get to their children at school, not knowing if it was a terrorist act or not? Please inform us on how you're going to communicate with the public in the future.
Let's start off with about 12:30 yesterday afternoon, major disturbance occurred, as you're all aware, on the Department of Water and Power's power system. It originated at the Taluka Receiving Station, which is located roughly at the 170 and 134 freeways. Essentially, what was happening was that we are in the process, in the department, of installing automated systems for both the receiving stations and distribution stations. And normally what happens is that the two control systems are de-energized, and the wires are accordingly put back together. In this case, the old system was not de-energized. One of our workers cut a wire which had three wires. Those, included in those wires were two live wires, and that, in turn, created a short. If you can, this is not any more complicated than your own household situation, if you overload a circuit, your circuit breaker will break. In essence, that's what happened. In essence, that's what happened. But in the case of the power system, what we do is, in order to protect the system, there's a whole cascading series of events that protect various aspects of the system. So that cascading started immediately. The receiving station lost power, it was shut off. That started then imbalance within the system, imbalance of voltage and current. And this sends signals then to the transmission system. After the signals went to the transmission system, the transmission system shut itself down, and we had to start shedding load to various customers, and then it was an automatic shedding. When you have the situation, when your generators are on and the transmission system cannot accept it, then you have to shut down the generators. And that process began. So just to give you a timing, at 12:32, almost immediately, roughly 200,000 customers were shed. Seven or eight minutes later, another 150,000 were shed. By roughly 10 minutes after 1, roughly 756,000 customers, or roughly half the city's customers, were shed from the load. In order to regain that situation, what you basically stabilized, we stabilized the system in about 110, 115, and started in the process of adding customers back to the system. There were 25,000 restored a little after, almost 115. 10 minutes later, another 80-some-odd thousand. 10 minutes later, another 90,000. 1340, 300,000, 1350, 190,000. And by 2 o'clock, roughly, not entirely, but almost all the customers restored. So roughly in an hour and a half.
Now, Mr. Deaton, on that point, can you transition when you're done with the areas affected? And let us know, here's a map by one of the local newspapers that differs a little bit. They show kind of like a little map, not a little map, but a big map, showing not only the city of Los Angeles is affected, but Pasadena, Burbank, and Glendale. It shows LAX all the way over to Santa Monica, along the coast, West Hollywood, all the way into the San Fernando Valley. But according to your document, yesterday, it also included San Pedro, that there were power outages out there. The reason why I point this out is, the map talks about what a widespread area was affected, but at the same time, that might not even be accurate. My main point is, what methods do you have in place at the department to make sure that the public is informed appropriately, certainly to make sure that we minimize the damage and minimize the incidents and accidents that may occur? What are you using at the department to communicate with the public to make sure, first of all, that timely information comes out, and secondly, that that information is accurate?
The, we immediately informed the emergency operations center, Police Department, Transportation Department, Department of Police, Department of Transport. And we also informed the OC that just after 2 o'clock, that most of the power had been restored. There were a few customers, I just wanted to let you know, it was late as 8:45. I think there was about 500 or 600 customers that were still out, and we replaced them a little before 9 o'clock.
But can you tell us, you mentioned some internal, obviously, we need to let the Police Department know, the Fire Department, and thank you for letting us know that. But in addition to that, what other outlets are there so that the general public can start making sure that certain information gets to them so that they are less affected by reacting inappropriately? For example, the radio was talking about it immediately. Movie cameras were in the air, you know, showing the traffic, et cetera. But that's only a minimal part of the information that can get out to the public. In this particular case, the mass media is actually helpful, is it not?
Yes, and I think they informed that there was an outage. We, there were a period of time that various stories were, what had caused it, until I was convinced of the reason and that it was human error. We did not formally say what had happened. As soon as I was convinced of that, we went downstairs and went to the press and to the media and explained exactly our understanding of what had happened at that point. And basically, we had no, at no point did we have any evidence that it was a terrorist issue. On the other hand, I had no proof that it was not. And we were verifying exactly what had happened. And I didn't want to go and say, it didn't sound reassuring to me that I had no evidence that there was a terrorist activity until, I wanted to go and tell people exactly what it was when I looked for sure that it was human error. And we did that as soon as we knew that information. And we're confident of it.
Now, whenever something like this happens, hopefully, we learn from it. Can you give us maybe some of the two, three things that you learned from yesterday that you can make sure you do better next time, or maybe something that won't be done in the future that you learned from yesterday? For example, this was a matter, as you started off saying, a particular wire that was cut inadvertently or what have you in the process, caused this chain reaction. Do we have other opportunities for that vulnerability in our system? And if we do, have we identified them? And are we on our way to figuring out how we can address them, if it's cost-effective to address them, and if they can be addressed?
We're going to review this whole process of how the error was made relative to not realizing that the system was de-energized. That was not, I want to, this is not one employee's problem. This is a system of us putting in these new systems, and there are a lot of people involved and a lot of people responsible, not least of which is myself. We will take a long look at that particular process and ensure. I have to tell you though, that we have installed nine of those already in other receiving stations and 30 similar ones in distributing stations all over the city. We have a special crew, they're responsible for that, they have not made a mistake. And this mistake is only assuming that both of these systems were down and one of them was not. And that created a short. But we are going to take a long look at that particular subject to figure out if better training or who, how did that happen? You'll eventually have a formal written report on this incident. Yes, definitely. And then we're going to look deep into that particular issue. The other thing that is, and I still maintain and truly believe that the system did what it was supposed to do. What we're going to do is get some, kind of an outside review. Is there a way that perhaps we can put our arms around, get a smaller area so it doesn't trigger as large an area? However, this particular receiving station is connected to either by 230 KVA or 500 KVA to both, to a whole host of other generating stations. So it's a very key receiving station in the process. And I think that was one of the reasons that it was so widespread. And we, and I want, need to look a little bit in the context of this, however. We had a major problem. Half the city went down. Within an hour and a half, the city was back up 100%. The employees of the Department of Water and Power did a terrific job of bringing themselves back and recovering from this. We also had a situation where we had a problem at one location, and that location did not cause damage to any other location. All the systems worked to shut down and protect itself. And so, if you can imagine that if it had been an outside source of a problem, that that outside source would have only been able to damage a piece of the system, and the system automatically protects itself. Plus, in the case of this, load dispatchers were doing an excellent job of doing manually what it needed to do in order to protect the system.
Now, when you want to fix something this big and this complicated, it's not like going out to your neighborhood hardware store and getting a $100 part and fixing it. If this may, you may be having to come back to us and let us know that it costs maybe millions of dollars to actually make some fixes that we learned about and that we do need to fix. That point being the case, I just wanted to ask you, cost. We have to justify these things. Do we have any estimates in this city, for example, every 100,000 connections that are out for a minute or an hour or a day? What kind of cost there is either to the department or to the economy when these kinds of things happen?
No, I don't, I don't. We should look, we should look into the.
And I think this had some sundry, some issues that happened, both at the harbor with the refineries and with the traffic system and some things that we need to look at and see if we can't mitigate the impact on some of those things that only came to lights due to the largeness of this incident. Now, after 9/11, the proprietary departments, I mean, the DWP, the harbor, the airport became part of the EERC process. Did that work in this particular case? Was that, that needed to be identified or utilized in any way?
We informed them and let them know what was happening. I was in communication with the chief of police, and we were in communication with the fire chief, letting him know what was happening. Now, that was a perfect lesson learned when Council President Padilla was the mayor for a few days, and that was one of the things that was learned about in that crisis, or potential crisis to this city, but it was a crisis for this country. And that was one of the things that was put in place. So that actual action, it was implemented by Council President Padilla, was actually embodied in yesterday's plan, and it seemed to be a proper thing to do?
Yes. Also, another thing coming out of the Northridge earthquake was the, one of the needs, and we had a situation in the Northridge earthquake where we had to start from ground zero because every, from zero power. And hydro was the only way we could get back. And we used Castake. Castake was used yesterday quite extensively. And since that time, we've added peaker generators at both harbor and valley, and those were used yesterday to bring the system back up immediately. They're very quick to provide power in a very, very, small period of time. So we used both those and Castake to get ourselves back up. I want to make another comment. At no point did we have a lack of generation. The system shut itself down. When you don't have the transmission system in place, then the generators have to be shut down. But we had more than enough, it was not a heavy load day, number one. Number two, we had more than adequate generation. What we had to do before we could recover is get our whole system back in a stable situation. Once it was stabilized, which was roughly a half an hour later, we started adding it within an hour. We had all the customers, most 99% of the customers back on the system.
One more correction, and then one more final point. And that is, at this point in time, are you able to clarify for us as to whether or not this crew or these crews that have been making these replacements, if you feel satisfied with the supervision that they have on site when the replacements are taking place?
I'm satisfied with the supervision, and I'm satisfied with the crews. I'm not satisfied with their, somebody or somebodies failed to ensure that both control systems weren't de-energized. Okay, and that'll come out in court. And that's going to come, that's the only issue. These are excellent crews. As I said, they've installed almost 40 of these systems already. It's a long-term system, a replacement system. They're doing a fine job. This was an error, and we'll find out the reasons, and we'll set into place procedures to prevent it in the future.
Okay, my final point is, I appreciate the seriousness that you're taking this matter. We immediately were, my office got contacted by your people, and you were keeping us abreast, and the information was getting out further and further. I appreciate that. But at the same time, I want the people to understand that we, as a city, take this very seriously. Because when you think of the backup generation systems that hospitals have, and thank God they kicked in, if somebody's on an operating table and nobody died because of it, but the ambulance is trying to get to the hospital, gets caught in traffic because the light signals are out, and there really is no backup system for getting that person to where they belong. So this is a very, very serious matter, and we do take it seriously. So I look forward to seeing the full report on this matter, in addition to that, additional information, so that the people understand that if some of the answers to these questions is, we have to invest more money in our system, and it's going to be a lot of money for us to be able to let the public know. It's not only about life, which is priceless, but also the fact of the matter is, we live in a world of economies, and the fact of the matter is, every minute, every hour, every day that people are out of power, we can actually quantify and let people know. We can't afford to have this happen, and we have to be able to afford to make sure that we minimize it. Like you pointed out, Mr. Deaton, one of the objectives, I'm sure, is to make sure that if wire is cut, maybe 10,000 homes are affected for a couple of hours instead of 700,000 homes. And those are the kinds of things that I'm sure are going to cost engineering and maintenance and changes that cost money. Thank you.
I have on the queue Ms. Hahn, followed by Mr. Rosendahl, Ms. Zine, Ms. Grohl, Ms. Perry, and Mr. LeBanche. Final comment?
Just to comment about the traffic system. Yesterday, I heard Chief Bratton comment, and this is a congratulatory note to the citizens of Los Angeles, is that the cities that he's used to, the discipline and the courtesy of the drivers to go in as though there was a stop sign and to act in a fashion that was safe for everybody, he thought, as he watched from the air, was quite excellent. And the traffic system could have been a lot worse if the citizens hadn't acted in a rational fashion.
Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President. Certainly, it was an incident yesterday that I believe really shocked all of us, just in terms of the impact geographically that this one incident happened. And I think all of us were concerned that we put into place some sort of checks and balances that does not exist now, that would prevent, you know, one human error from having that kind of incredible outage all over our city and beyond. I was concerned that, I was, I was not comfortable that the Department of Transportation responded as quickly as I thought they should have seen how all the intersections were out. That's where my biggest fear was, that we would have some accidents. And I understand from your earlier comments that they were notified.
Now, the difficulty with the traffic signals is they're hooked up to various parts of the city's grid, and then when that grid goes down, the traffic signals go down. I don't know what we can do about that, but I've already talked to somebody this morning from Transportation, and we're going to get our people together and see if there's some way to make it less vulnerable to even our own system and see if there isn't a backup. But it's, again, as Mr. Cardenas said, it's not, can't be done overnight, and can't be done free, so we'll have to look at how we might approach that.
I mean, I know in my former life with utility, when we were having plans, rolling blackouts, I mean, certain grids were, you know, all that information was given to a local city manager, and we knew every intersection that would go down, we knew every ATM machine that would go down, we knew every garage door that wouldn't open, but we gave people a little more warning than what we had.
Well, you get 30 minutes and half the city's down, it's, get your attention.
Right. Let me say, one of the things I was extremely concerned about, and I really didn't get a report from the department, ended up having to call refineries myself. And that's what happens to refineries. And I think a lot of people don't understand that when refineries don't have electricity, what they do is begin to burn that fuel because they can't process it. We had six major plumes, fire plumes in the harbor area yesterday, billowing black smoke for an entire afternoon. I think the pollution that was allowed to get into the air yesterday was extremely damaging. I know three people were taken to the hospital as a result of the fumes that were coming from the refineries. I understand, maybe you can explain it a little bit better, that some of the refineries generate their own electricity, but DWP is their backup electricity. So I still couldn't quite understand why they had to be shut down yesterday. And you can explain that a little better, because I think a lot of people want to understand the role refineries have. But this motion, the part that I'm most interested in, is that DWP will try to identify locations that need to be better secured or backed up in case of a major power system. I would hope that your report would include the refineries in that. There was no good reason yesterday that the refineries, all of them in the harbor area, should have been without electricity. That closes such a big concern.
Well, two things. One, I'm not exactly certain of the reasons, and I couldn't give you an explanation, but it is like the traffic signals, it's one of those areas that popped up yesterday that I hadn't anticipated. And the second part of that is, as you all know, the way the wind blows, it actually goes to Seal Beach.
Good. Well, that is a concern of mine, though, is that, is that... Good. Well, that, that is a concern of mine though, is that, is that we find out certainly, you know, what happened. And you certainly can carve out, you know, the refineries to prevent anything like in the future from them for losing...
No, I think we did.
Again, it doesn't make sense to me if you're their backup electricity, why, why were they shut down yesterday? Why were they shed from the load? That would be one area that would not shed from the load because of the consequences.
They're a big load. I mean, so we need to look at it serious, very closely because the, the size of the load itself is significant. So, but they do do their own power, so at least in some cases, so we need to...
And there's certainly, yeah, and there's certainly a lot of, a lot of consequences for what happened yesterday, but I don't know if anybody anticipated the, the emissions that would have been put into our air yesterday all afternoon and it was...
When I talked to Mike Mulina, I was really surprised at that.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the queue is Councilmember Rosendahl, then Councilmembers Zine, Gruel, Perry, and LeBanche.
Now, I might say that when Councilman Cardenas and Councilwoman Hahn and I speak, we're the oversight committee for DWP as is the whole council oversight for everything in the city. So we have particular relationships and, and it gives us a sense of, of some kind of discipline, focus, and supervision. Couple of big questions. Three wires get cut and so many homes get affected. Is there a lesson learned from this? Is there an omen out there that if it happens again, there won't be such a dramatic amount of homes affected?
Well, I think that if the problem happened in virtually the, the same area right now, that that would happen again because that's the way the cascading happens. What we're suggesting, what we're going to do is we're going to take a look at, is there a way of avoiding that and putting your arms around where your, the large, the impact isn't as large. Now, this particularly receiving station receives power, is connected to both of the 500 KVA and the 230 KVA, to the generation of scattered good and pains and power coming in from outside the city. So it is a particular central, central facility, but notwithstanding that, we're going to look in because that was, that quite frankly, to me, was the hardest thing to explain, is why this one thing can end up affecting half the city. Now, that's the bad news. The good news is that it protected itself and we were able to, within 30 minutes, correct and stabilize the system and then over the next hour, bring 99% of those customers back. I'm not trying to diminish the, the impact on people and it was a very anxious couple hours in the city, both from traffic and the individuals being very disconcerted by the fact they didn't have power. But, again, it showed that the system worked. What we did, what we need to do is have the system work on a little fewer houses, fewer customers, hopefully.
Well, I thought the mayor's leadership was terrific. He quickly got in front of the cameras and he calmed the people down.
Yes.
Because we're worried about terrorist attacks. We're worried about cataclysmic events. Do you see putting in place mechanisms that will stop this cascading going forward and, and will that be presented to us in the near future?
The, the cascading, let me just explain. The cascading itself is good. What I, I'm going to try to do is to find out if we can make it, the cascading where it doesn't impact as many homes if it does happen. In other words, if this had only impacted half those homes or a quarter of those homes or a quarter of those customers, it would have been much easier to, to withstand and there would have been so much less disruption. But the cascading itself is a situation where you're protecting the system. It's just like, again, like the home, you have an overload and a circuit breaker. Your main intent is to be able to protect your home from burning up. And you go back out and you fix the circuit breaker. Now, but it only, what we're going to try to do is, it appears that it affected all the circuit breakers or half the circuit breakers and it would be best if we can eliminate where it only impacts a few of the circuit breakers depending on what happens. And that's the intent. And we're going to come back and tell you as best we can what we need to do in order to do that.
Now, there was a comment made by a labor leader that said they shouldn't have done it in the middle of the day, they should have done it at night and blah, blah, blah. Any comment on that?
Well, my, um, as I said before, we've done 39 of them during work, uh, working hours, uh, normal working hours. This is normal maintenance. The issue was that everybody thought those systems were de-energized and one of them wasn't. If they'd both been de-energized, it would have been just fine. One. Two, I'm not certain that I, you know, I think I'd like to talk to Public Safety to whether or not we'd like to have the signals out at night better than we would during the day. And this is not, uh, this is not a good choice here. The good choice is fix what we've, we did wrong and then if we miss it the next time where it doesn't impact as many homes.
Is there anything the public can do on our own to, to prepare ourselves for a situation like that? Would solar panels be part of a solution or other ways in which we could become energy self-sufficient?
The, I think it'd be difficult. I think this is a wake-up call both for the department and for citizens in general that things that, when you have a big emergency, you should be prepared with water and the kinds of things, whether it's this particular kind of a problem that could have gone on for a lot longer, we could have an earthquake. I think, generally speaking, I think the public should just look at how to do an emergency repairness and for themselves and how they might be self-sufficient for, it's very clear that it takes a while for government to get into action in some cases and that you're on your own for the first 24 hours to 48 hours and you should realize that and get prepared for it. And I think the events of the last month, not the least of which was yesterday in Los Angeles, I think should clarify that.
And we should have maybe radios that don't need to be plugged in or even a little television set that might not be plugged in so we can be communicating with each other.
Right. And water and some food and some emergency preparedness on a larger scale than I think most of us do, including myself. I'm thinking about it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to acknowledge the media that immediately cut into their normal broadcasts and informed the public what was going on. I know there's a lot of fear, not only in Los Angeles but around the country. And when an individual goes on the media threatening Los Angeles, all of a sudden the power goes out in the middle of the afternoon. It creates a lot of fear, a lot of anxiety in people's minds. So the media preempted a lot of their programming and keeping the public informed. So I want to acknowledge the efforts of Los Angeles media. In fact, it was broadcast nationally, what was occurring in Los Angeles. Normally a power outage wouldn't generate that type of attention, but the media should be credited for keeping the public informed. I've got some concerns about the response, the Fire Department, all the folks that were stranded in elevators around the city of Los Angeles, the response of the Water and Power Department or Emergency Generators to give those folks in the elevator the ability to get out of the elevator. If you're stuck in the middle of the floor and the power's out, is there any type of system that we have in place at this time where they're in the elevator and they can get out before the hour passes? That's one of the questions I have. The other is the response by the Police Department, Department of Transportation, when you have 4,000 intersections without the traffic lights or 2,000, whatever the number was, it creates mass chaos. And the radio broadcasters were constantly reminding people, traders are four-way stop. Be cautious. And I don't know of any significant collisions we have as a result of that power outage. I go into another area. There's no question that the Water and Power is in contract negotiations. There's no question that October 1st is a new contract term for them. And there's no question that it hasn't been resolved by this body for a resolution. Now, I always want to look at things in a positive tone, but I'm also a realist. Is this, or could this be interpreted as if we don't get this, and there have been threats made in the past, if we don't get this, we're going to shut down the power of Los Angeles? And this is the consequence. On a day when we don't have a major power train, on a day when we don't have 100 degree temperature in the city of Los Angeles, and if one employee can cause this to happen to the city and the surrounding communities that are affected, what safeguards do we have in place? What safeguards do we have for the hospitals? What safeguards do we have for the people of Los Angeles that they can function in a safe manner? And the final question I have is those businesses that were affected economically, if they want to submit a claim, who do they submit that claim to and is the Department of Water and Power prepared to respond to that? First off, there is no, I have, I, this was not one person, as I said. This was a whole unit and levels of supervision all the way up to me. The mistake was made is that they thought the system was de-energized and the employee did what he normally would do, accepting that if it was energized, they caused a shortage. That's all there is. There ain't no more.
So a simple mistake?
A simple mistake. Okay. And, but not one made just by himself. Okay. Made with all the way up to the GM. Secondly, on the generator, you, Department of Water and Power, this building and other buildings have backup generators for elevators, et cetera, as do hospitals, et cetera. Those are the ways to take care of that particular problem.
So that emergency power will let people...
Right. Because I understand Fire Department responds to a lot of calls, people trapped in elevators.
Right. And in some cases, I assume those buildings didn't have emergency generators and they, they should have for those, for those elevators, emergency generators. The fact is that we can't give people warning because if the system starts to go down, if you, if you hold it longer than you should, then the recovery period will be hours and days and weeks. We would not have got backup in an hour and a half if the system had not protected itself.
I understand that, but what protection is there for the person on the 54th floor? In other words, a term, you know, 20 minutes, 10 minutes, whatever, to at least get out of the elevator if they want to walk down 54 flights of stairs or in that building, in that building, the only backup that is instantaneous or relatively instantaneous would be a backup generator. But we don't give public notification that we're going to shut down the system. We don't. And maybe if we did, then... Just to give you an idea, in seven minutes, from 12:32 to 12:39, we had to shed 350,000 customers. In that seven minutes, there wasn't time, if you were going to protect the system, to notify those people. Just wasn't enough time. There isn't enough. It's, you know, if you can destroy your system instantaneously.
I understand that. But just a gap of time where people would know. Because when I came into City Hall, the power was off, the elevators weren't working, the alarms were going off. We all knew that. I'm just concerned about those people who may be cost to fall or who may be stuck in there at some level. And I heard the sirens all around downtown that responded. And I received information that they responded to all these calls about people trapped in elevators. That doesn't include the alarm systems that weren't working to the police.
The only backup for elevators, that short term of the, you know, within five to 10 minutes is an emergency generator. Okay. And do we have a system where that is in place in the buildings that we have, large commercial buildings, where those elevators will at least let the people escape the elevators so they're not locked there for a long period of time?
Oh, Ms. Zine, I just want to add that many of these generators are set up in such a manner that will detect a loss of power feeding into the building, would automatically start up. In other words, it will kick in automatically. Now, the question is, is the generator able to start for other problems or, in many cases, they start, they start automatically and restore critical power for the building, elevators, lights, et cetera, et cetera. We have to evaluate it piece by piece and determine the conditions of those generators which will be owned by the customer and determine whether they're set up for automatic startup. That avoids issue notification because it will send a loss of power to the building.
Right. And clearly, you have emergency power that needs to power certain critical functions. You want emergency power here, certain things were working, certain things weren't working. But at the City Club, for example, someone's at the top stuck in the elevator and they need to obviously get out, walk down the stairs or at least sit in the lobby or some, that's a concern I have for the folks. And then the Fire Department have to walk 54 flights or 34 flights to rescue these folks and somehow manually remove them from the elevator. Maybe that's something we can work on with building and safety down in the future, just to have that protection in there.
We have to survey to see how many have, how many that have elevators and also then have emergency generators. But I'm, the, should be some correlation there. And again, this wasn't a, a day of great drain where we went to brownouts where sometimes you anticipate we're going to flex your power and start to conserve. It wasn't like that at all. The issue about the employee and the contract, et cetera, no indication on that. No.
I don't believe it.
So is there going to be a report back to the Personnel Committee, to Energy and Commerce as to what, what sanctions or what remedy or what discipline or whatever accountable? I'm not, I know you were in your office. I spoke to you. I know you're not the one responsible on the ground level, but ultimately, this general manager, I'm, when a police officer does something, the Fire Department does something, you know, we bring them in and...
I completely agree. And we will look, like I've said, it's not just the person who actually did the, the, that one wire, the people surrounding it and it goes all the way up to the general manager. And we'll report on that. And we'll report on what we're going to do about it.
And who's that general manager?
That's Mr. Deaton in the hot seat. And I also want to acknowledge the gentleman. I don't know his name, but he left of you to the right of you.
I think it's the right of me. Henry Martinez.
Henry Martinez, uh, who I was with at the power outage in Winnetka when the folks were down there in the, in the vault.
Yeah, we're down.
There's a lot of dedicated Water and Power folks and I don't want to give any discredit to those who work hard to keep it right. But I've got a great concern about all those folks who have this fear, this anxiety, and we don't appreciate the power until it goes out and all the consequences.
Realize, Mr. Zine, that within, it took us a half an hour to stabilize the system and an hour more to reestablish power for those 750,000 employees, customers. Those were dedicated employees that did both of those things to return stability to the system and to return power to the customers of the city. And they did that in an hour and a half.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A lot of good questions have been asked, particularly by Councilmember Cardenas, Chair of the Commerce Committee, as well as, I think, Ms. Hahn, who started the discussion. My focus was a little bit on the transportation, the emergency nature of some of those intersections and the assurances as to, and you may have asked, because I stepped out for a moment, as to how the call goes directly to transportation. Does the DWP that makes that call, is it DWP that calls EOC that's activated to do that? How does that...
It goes through EOC. It goes through EOC and we, now, in the case of the Police Department, I, I had direct communications with Chief Bratton, but the, mainly on what had caused the problem was his main issue.
Right.
The, but the other goes through the EOC and to the Department of Transportation and to the Fire Department, et cetera.
Because in my conversation a little bit with Transportation, it happened to be in a meeting when some of this was occurring with some of the Assistant General Managers of DOT, was the fact that after even the electricity is put back on in each intersection, what they were sharing with me is they have to go physically to each intersection to ensure that when the lights come on, back to their normal, you know, red, yellow, and green, that there isn't a pedestrian in the middle of the street, that there isn't a car. And I introduced a motion today with my colleagues, Councilmember Cardenas and Mr. LeBanche, asking the DOT to come back to us to really inform us what didn't work and this kind of emergency. And secondly, how, is there any way to kind of put that system, to ensure that we are quickly getting them online in the most safe manner and considering the relationship that DOT has with the Los Angeles Police Department? Because obviously, we don't have enough enough officers, officials of the Department of Transport that are going to be at each location, but how do they deploy immediately all of their staff, all of their personnel, perhaps, that are giving infections, that are doing something, that are doing some, is there a system that allows us to respond to that?
My understanding is, if, in this instance, the receiving sta, if it had just been a receiving station or a small area, because of the very problem on the traffic lights and, and other sundry issues that could develop, the station involved is notified immediately that there's a power outage in this area and that then they're able to deploy for signals, et cetera. Now, this was very widespread and a little, it got...
Started in one location.
Yeah, it got, it got, real quick. The, so that was a little different and, and it was obviously much more difficult. But my understanding is... But my understanding is that, even when it's a small outage, that the local police station is notified and the department, so they're able to deploy to take care of those intersections as appropriate.
And I know, again, when we had the, on Bull Canyon, when we had the water main break there and had closed, at the street for a period of time, DOT was out there quickly, but the kind of information that was critical to the media, which was, it's going to close for this period of time, here are your alternate routes. That's another, I think, source of information that we would appreciate and coordination between DDP and Transportation, LAPD. To be able to not only make people comfortable, this is not a terror threat, but also, we know the following intersections have been impacted by this. We suggest you take alternate routes, including X, Y and Z. And I think we'd like to see that not only for this type of emergency, but other, hopefully smaller emergencies where it does not impact the entire city of Los Angeles.
I think that interdepartmental communications to the public should probably be improved.
Great. Well, we will ask you to probably participate as we come back in a couple of weeks. I think the motion instructed them to come back to the report, but I think there's definitely room for improvement. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry.
Thanks, Mr. Deaton. Just a couple of quick questions. And I referred some of these bits of information to Councilwoman Hahn about the flaring at the refineries, burning of excess fuel, and then immediately contacted South Coast. Air Quality Management District. And I wanted to make sure that, as you provide your follow-up report on this, if you would be in contact with them, to talk about commissions questions and if there are any technologies that we need to make sure occurs through the AQMD. Protocols or operational issues in the event of an emergency with respect to refineries. I'd ask you to help me clarify that on the city side.
Be happy to.
Okay. And then, one other, two other quick things. Two things more rapidly. There was an odor downtown, and when I talked to representatives, AQMD, they said that the county was flaring some facility downtown or in close proximity of Civic Center. Do you have any familiarity with that site or what they're talking about? This was at a tanto de ese lugar.
The only, the county owns downtown, and I know, would you have anything to burn? The, the...
The generator?
The generator, but I don't, I can't imagine why they would be...
Is that the one next to the people?
Right.
I can't imagine why they would be flaring. Is that something you can check up on as well? And then, a quick question, and you can give us an answer when you follow up on the actual cost of the city and the, uh, cost in terms of dollars? Thank you.
In dollars.
Thank you, Councilmember Laban.
Mr. Cardenas, thank you for your motion, which I gladly second. Mr. Deaton, this was a receiving station. So this is really the middle part of the component, bring power to the system off the big transmission, which maybe Mr. Martinez can answer. How heavy are those lines out there, Whittlaw Highway?
Well, those are 500 KV lines that come into the station and then leave at 2:30.
And they leave at 2:30. So they receive it and then they go to the neighborhood distribution. They say, I'm told that if it wasn't a receiving station but a distribution station, the impact would not have been as great because receiving has more of a widespread problem. Mr. Stein, if you listened to this, because you had some questions, I want to ask you on the receiving station in the widespread. So would you explain that?
Well, basically, receiving stations are lower voltage and they are more closer to the neighborhoods. The large receiving stations are full power, large quantities of energy that are important and transformed, the lower voltage. So we have, in essence, more of an impact on larger receiving stations.
We have about over 100 distribution stations.
170 plus.
170 plus, how many receiving stations?
We have over 10.
Over 10. Fletcher Drive is a esteemed station. There's one in the area here. On this particular issue here, infrastructure is a key because some of our facilities are very old. I know that some are, the one that we had burnt out on Vine Street Distribution, San Antonio Vine, was a 1910 building. I know that the infrastructure inside is relatively newer, but still, some of these are over 80 years old. Threat. Some equipment is older.
We have replaced some equipment as well.
The structure is adult, but not the...
Right. Some of the equipment is more modern.
Right, on that issue. And also, Mr. Stein, because you did ask the question, I was out in the field, and the fire department that I got information from was touring, all the 105 fire stations go out, all their stations, and tour around and do the situation. They were at the Los Angeles Zoo and they informed me what they heard about the situation. There is a component. I do think what Mr. Deaton said though about the power for the traffic lights and the power for the streetlights are in different systems, I believe. If you can look into that, because I do have a belief of trying to bring street lighting to put all lighting, all power underwater and power so we could find a way to make it work a little better. And also see what technology we could use to upgrade our signals, because that was one of the very unfortunate things, the picture of the paper of somebody who got in a fender bender at an intersection. And I heard in the paper, I'd like you to confirm that at one intersection, everything was green. I've never heard that, but I will check with the officials of that. And also, I think that the EOC, and the information, in the modern age of technology, they are right out there and they take their cables and they come right up and they say, what is happening? Information is instantaneous and we have to be able to somehow come together with staff from our departments to give the right information. Because in the first minutes of this, as I was traveling from City Hall through Lincoln Heights where the power was out, into the zoo, they thought it was something much worse than it is. So information is knowledge, is power. And I think it's important that we have that sort of public information from your agency and others.
Just a comment, though. It is not, until you know what's happened. It's hard to explain what has happened. You need, in getting out there ahead of time, when you don't know what the facts are, it doesn't lend itself to...
But to say that, we don't know what the facts are, but we have 10 different receiving stations in the city, we're checking all of them right now. We'll be back with half-hour updates. That may satisfy them, but they get information. When they don't get information, then they go off and say what they may believe is, on information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laban. Seeing no more speakers. Thank you for that report.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have a vote on the motion. Please open the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Okay, that item's approved.
Next item on the agenda?
Next item, Mr. President, item number 17 was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Okay, we're on item number 17. Councilmember Smith. Item number 17 is before us. Councilmember Smith. We have a public comment. We had a public comment in committee. Is there, is there... We have a public comment card.
Okay, what I was just concerned about, Mr. Fujioka, I think you clarified that, but my concern was an instruction we gave, I thought, in committee, that these were to be confidential employees and that these records were not to be publicly released. And that's not in the instructions I saw. So I just want to clarify that that is in the instructions, that was what the committee had said, and that we want to make sure there's a confidentiality issue here because any of these kinds of things that are released publicly could come back and result in lawsuits to the city. We have to be very careful in how these things are handled. I just want to hear from Mr. Fujioka, he's still here, that is in fact in the report.
Okay. It would take, public comment was held in committee and it would take an action of the council to open up a public comment. Okay, Mr. Fujioka, please come forward. Thank you. We have one comment card. Okay. Open up for public comment. Any objections? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Candido Maris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Smith, thank you very, very much. Item 17 has to do with Budget and Finance Committee report relative to establishing of a government efficiency unit to screen, monitor and investigate allegations involving fraud, waste and abuse of city resources. What is the greatest resource that we have in the city? The people that work for us. And over two years ago, I was appointed to a small advisory committee and we took a look at contracts. And for two years, we've seen the abuse of city workers. And for two years, we've seen the abuse of city workers. One of our departments has over 1,000 cases filed against them. This is the dirty little secret that we have here, that there is fraud taking place. That there is conflict of interest. And I hope that you finance this, 240,000, because I'm not doing this to brag, but if I have to, I will finance this. Because this is so important to the city that we eliminate, you know, cases of retaliation. It doesn't belong to the city. Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Smith. Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me, can I speak now on number 20? 1611?
No, we're on item 17 right now. Items are before us, but item number 17 is on the agenda right now. Mr. Smith?
Mr. Smith.
And Mr. Fujioka? Okay, you ready? Thank you.
Councilman Smith's recollection was accurate. There was an instruction from the committee and it was accepted by all parties that information obtained through investigations would be kept confidential.
It's confidential.
Just make sure that's in the report. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do you know other, oh, wait, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak on this issue and that I want to appreciate the work that the controllers are doing this and the local CIO. I know that with the opportunity to have you, department heads, commissioners, the ability to look at how we capture and plug up any holes. It might be out there when there are monitor transactions. And the monitoring of these transactions is important, especially, I think, the parks. I think this man is doing a great job establishing those controls. One of the things that has been present in my mind is that I'm seeing how we use our fields, especially limited recreation fields. And then you find that one entity, after you have one account, that a person paid for it, a private person using this permission, essentially, to edit this transaction. Essentially, securing the fact that we need our kids to use our ball fields, not someone who can pay more and letting other adults come in from other cities and essentially displace our kids from the recreation fields, to me is a crime. So I want to thank the controller for the focus of John Buckley, for his attention to this matter and the fact that we are in the transition playing with commissioners and new department heads to secure and plug up these holes and allow for the kind of credibility and accountability to exist and we can monitor these kinds of issues. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We have two more speakers, Mr. Fujioka, so you can stay seated in case they have a question for you. Councilmember Stein, followed by Councilmember Rosenthal.
I'll be brief. I know that the city with 40,000 employees, some of them wonderful, some of them are great, and we know that we have problems. We've seen that in departments. And I know that we have a whistleblower hotline, I think it's done through the Ethics Commission. I haven't really seen any great investigations where it has resulted in issues coming forward. I know that with the police department, the internal affairs, there have been situations where it has been brought criminal prosecution, termination, et cetera. We're very serious in the Personnel Committee about delivering the service to the community and hold people accountable and responsible. And I think that the Controller, for Lower Chick, is doing this in the benefit of all taxpayers who are paying those heavy dollars for the service, to have those employees come forward, receive the compensation, the benefits, et cetera, but deliver that without waste, without fraud. And I commend her for bringing this forward. And she was here just last week, making sure we would support this, these folks. She has these three people to investigate and sort type us. I think we do a wonderful job. The city attorney has a group that does similar type investigations, but I think what we need is something that's very effective, like the Inspector General with the police department, the effectiveness of that operation. So this, I think, will send it to a new level and hold people totally accountable and responsible. And the benefit will be to the taxpayers of City Hall centers for this minimal investment we're putting for the personnel that we employ. But again, congratulations to our controller for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Mr. Weiss and Mr. Virgo, so I think we're the initial makers of the motion as well in helping on that. Mr. Rosenthal, followed by Mr. Mon.
You know, there's a few expressions, like a stitch in time saves nine and an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of something or another. We're looking at $240,000, we're looking at three salaries, contractual services. The controller did come before our committee and discuss it, and she was around the horseshoe last week. Tell us your sensing of what this might do for us as a city in cutting out waste and fraud and whistleblowers and all that. What's your take on it?
Well, it sends a very strong message, not only to, you know, the staff, to all various city departments, but also to the folks we serve, that we're going to aggressively pursue any allegations of fraud or waste. Having it in the controller's office is something that I support. It's based on a commitment to work in a very collaborative manner with the Ethics Commission and other offices who are charged with investigating issues of this type. Right now, we know that the controller's office is receiving calls from a variety of sources, identifying potential areas of waste, giving this office resources to investigate these allegations. Is there anyone from the Ethics Commission here? Could they come forward for a second? We've talked about this, she can come, but I'll let her say, speak to her support. And as you're walking up here, I'd like to see how this relationship between the Ethics Commission and the controller's office would be working hand in glove with each other on that.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. Leanne Pellam, Executive Director of the Ethics Commission. As Mr. Fujioka indicated, I was at the earlier committee meetings a couple of times to support the request by the controller for these additional resources. My view and our view of the commission is that these are resources that are necessary and helpful. I said to the committee that unfortunately, there is plenty of work to go around. We have, at the Ethics Commission, as you know, a charter mandate to have a whistleblower hotline. We receive over 300 to 400 complaints a year and we work closely with the controller as those complaints come in, when they relate to issues that are of a controller nature, protection of the person, so forth. We have had several meetings with the staff at the controller's office. And I think in this area, it's important that we continue to collaborate. We plan to do that, we have been. And I think this is, as Mr. Fujioka indicated, though, one way for the city to assure itself that it is doing everything it can to police, to self-police, and then to make corrections when necessary. We do that through the power of the controller's office, we do it through the authority, the voters vested in the city Ethics Commission as well.
Is there a difference between your whistleblowers and the potential whistleblowers that the controller's office will deal with?
I think from some of the information that we had seen from the controller's office, we did a look to see if we could tell where the source of the complaint might have come from. At that point, it struck me that a number of complaints the controller had for this specific time period we were looking at as a sample seemed to perhaps be more from within the city. We had a number of complaints from outside the city, the best we could tell. But I think, again, the kind of work where there is fraud or waste going on, that's a very classic controller-type function. Obviously, to the extent that there are issues of abuse of authority, abuse of position, conflicts of interest, those are areas where we'll be working with that office to make sure that those issues are being dealt with. But again, as I, I'm saddened to say, I think there is enough work to be done in this area to make sure that the city is doing everything it can to make sure that we're detecting problems when they exist and to deal with them as quickly as possible.
Now, Bill, when this is approved, I'm assuming it will, will there be a piece of paper that will go to 40,000 employees saying, here are issues that you might want to focus on, or here's a phone number, or here's how you can get in touch, or here's what your responsibilities are? I mean, how will this mechanism work so that employees will feel, A, safe that they can be whistleblowers, and B, that they know what the criteria is for what they're looking at so that they can be more effective? And obviously, we as a city can be more effective. Now, to what, Robber, the controller's office, Robber, the office of the controller, now that we've established a program, we're designing a mechanism that will design a program for the employees of the city and have access to referencies? Mr. Laban?
Muchas gracias, señor Laban. Muchas gracias, señor Fujioka. Now, with respect to the classification differential of the office of the controller and the ethical, because one has more...
porque una tiene más estatus que la otra. Con respecto a clasificación y pago. Bueno, sí, ya se nos preguntó, nosotros lo vamos a investigar. Ahora, nosotros hemos establecido o identificado que una clase de investigador, nosotros sentimos que las credencia, las posiciones y con eso, las funciones y responsabilidades se cargan. Concordamos con la posición del investigador. That's one job classification, but they have some type of unit that does this, is that correct?
Yes, but it's of a different nature, different type.
But here, all of a sudden, you know, we always have this problem. And I know others bring this up. Where are we on equality as far as what... Less if you work for the Ethics Commission, you get paid more for the controller. Does that mean that when the Ethics Commission develops somebody that has a skill in this area of city service, that they would want to go to the controller's office and maybe want to get to the city attorney's office because they pay more? You know, we always had that run-up. Who's looking at that?
There's a commitment to look at that from both my office and the personnel department.
But we haven't hired the people yet, have we?
No. I think we need to... The class we identify for the controller's office is the appropriate class, looking at the relationship to the positions in the Ethics Commission. Should it resolve in delaying this program? That could happen separately. We need to get this program going, get it through, and then the personnel department in my office could look at classes who perform somewhat of a similar duty in the Ethics Commission.
Our budget is over $5 billion, right? What do you think percentage-wise, waste or fraud?
That's something I wouldn't want to guess at.
Bueno, qué es lo que piensa, que es... How are we going to know? How often? I'd like to ask amendment, I don't know if anyone wants to second this? No sé si alguien quiera secundar en esta moción, pero que me gustaría que los reportes de esta unidad... And you give me this example twice a year or four times a year to the audit and government efficiency. At this time, on March of 2006, any work we have, we found no waste or fraud. And then, if they have found waste or fraud, they don't have... I know there's some confidentiality, but I want the controller's office to report they found something or they didn't. Because the thing about public service and the thing about the job that we do, everybody talks about waste and fraud. Well, let's find that waste and fraud and let's go after it and let's fund programs here. We've been talking about waste and fraud often since 1988, 89. What about that amendment?
Councilman, the controller's intent is to report on the activities of the properties to indicate referrals that have come in, which ones have been investigated.
I know, let's do it on a quarterly basis? Okay, I have a second to that amendment? Second. So, we can have a second on that? Excuse me?
It's one of the recommendations. It's actually recommendation number four.
Read it again out loud.
It's to request the controller to report back to council on a quarterly basis with a summary of the investigative and financial results achieved by the implementation of fraud, waste, and abuse investigation unit.
This is an opportunity to look at what's there and all the time. Thank you. Okay, and then you're going to get back on the other issue between the Ethics Commission and the controller's unit? We'll report back to you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. And this has been a great discussion. I know when we initially introduced this motion and worked very closely with the controller's office and the city attorney and with the Ethics Commission to make sure that there was no duplication of efforts and that there was a need in the city to have this waste, fraud, and abuse. And I think through our research and advocacy, we found an effect, isn't it? And it actually brought all of the parties together to have a discussion about what's the most important role, whether it be for Ethics Commission or city attorney or the controller's office. In setting up this unit, what we're saying to the community and we're saying to our employees and contractors, is that we are going to have a transparent process in the city of Los Angeles, which ensures our taxpayer dollars are being spent in an efficient manner and one in which we feel there's no possible waste, fraud, or abuse. So, this has come, I think, to personnel committee and to audit and government efficiency committee and is an idea whose time has come. I think it's Mr. Rosendahl and his cliches he used this morning. It's true, this is well worth it. And I think we will identify, just because of the large amount of our budget, at least $240,000, whether it be fraud or abuse that may be wasted in the way we're managing what we found through audit and government efficiency. Pay for those individuals in that $240,000. And I know Bill Fugioca is counting on it that we're able to do that. But I think it is well worth the effort to create this unit and to have it within the controller's office who's demonstrated her ability really to take on the system. So, I would just also urge I vote today.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Other members of the council wish to speak. Mr. Lavine?
What is waste? In the CIO's terms, you've been around a long time, and the controller's terms, not the Ethics Commission, but what is waste?
Well, I would suggest it's using more resources than necessary to achieve a desired outcome.
The improper use of resources.
If a street crew is out working and they're maybe not working, you know, and then we're going to find out maybe that there's another problem. I mean, how are we looking at it? How are we defining waste? Because I like to stick up for the city, a lot of the ways, and the people who do a work out there. I want to make sure you guys and the men and women of our controller's office in this very important new unit understand that, understand what's going on. I wish the city controller was here. I saw her, you said, what did you say, Dennis, when you spoke earlier? The city controller came through here. I know I ran into her here, through the committee, but she ran through here last week. You said something in your comment there. You know, I think this is a very important issue because when I go out to the public and talk to them, and people think there's so much waste and fraud here, I don't see it. So, that's why I'm glad they're reporting quarterly. I'm very glad that they're reporting quarterly. So, let's talk about it if there's waste or fraud. And let's put it back into the CIO so we can build the parks, keep the libraries open, get more police officers. But I think it's real important that we have to have an understanding of how the city works and look at the challenge because I don't want to burn the process of our work out there. Could we work better? Yes, all the time. But what is the magnitude? What are you looking at? How are you... What are you... What's your measurements? Let me ask that question. What are your measurements of waste and fraud?
Again, we're going to be having referrals coming to us and the measurements may be different depending upon the allegations that come in. But we're going to use our best judgment in terms of, again, trying to figure it out whether or not the allegation does represent a situation where waste is occurring. I can't tell you that there's a specific measure that's going to be used for each case that comes to the controller's attention.
Fugioca, you have anything to add?
Algo que agregar, señor Fugioca. Bueno, principalmente pienso que sería la utilización inadecuada de los recursos ciudad, de la ciudad. Y entiendo que es un término muy general, pero lo que yo estoy viendo es...
We're already talking about two investigators. Looking at, I think, what would rise to top would be illegal activities, whether there's theft of city property or funds or...
Years ago, a fellow who ran Travel Town was a great guy. He took all the old chairs and the old railcars. Boom! That's fraud.
That's absolutely...
Yeah, right. Theft. Thank you, Officer Zein.
Because that... Because, you know, once this is widely publicized, she has about 300 calls. It would be unreasonable to expect that these two investigators can handle even a fourth of them or in some respects, a tenth of them, depending what type of investigation they require. And so, the focus would be, I would think, would be on the allegations that have... That deal with the theft of city resources or misuse, the blatant misuse of city resources with someone using a city car for private enterprise, something along that side.
Right. And if I could ask Ms. Pellam finally one question. You get 300 calls a year or something like that?
Between 300 and 400.
What kind of calls do you get? And how many times do people call back and say, what did you do? And, you know, in that sense, and because of maybe limited staff that you have, you're not able to do everything you want to do. If you could explain that, that's my last question.
Yes, thank you, councilmember. We, at the Ethics Commission, we have four senior investigators doing similar work. And they handle not only the incoming whistleblower complaints but ongoing investigations. So, in fact, our investigators that the pay that they're currently receiving do handle over 300 to 400 complaints a year. So, they've got quite a full platter. That said, the kinds of issues that they receive, calls about, they can range from employees who are doing private work on city time to other allegations of misuse of authority, conflicts of interest, and decision-making and that sort of thing. And those are often the most complex cases to examine. But we have a range of cases that come in and we do refer them to city departments when they are appropriately within a city department. We don't try and duplicate work that departments might already be handling.
Has there been a case where a city employee has done work on city time in this last calendar year that led to the termination of that employee in your recall?
I can't recall if there's one that's been led to a termination of employee, but I know we have in the last couple of years seen some cases of that nature.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Zein? Am I the last speaker? I just wanted to say forthwith.
Other members wish to speak on this item? Item 17. Seeing none, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Item number 21 was called special by councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. I think this item is important for us to be able to act appropriately and efficiently as a council and as a body. For example, today, you may see council motions that have been sitting there, backlog, and that haven't been seen in committee for years, and yet they're still being held. I think it's important for us to understand that we need to have a breakpoint, for example, two years. Every two years, there's an opportunity for a regular election cycle for us to have different members here. So, technically speaking, every two years, the council is going to be different, and every four years, it changes even more, and every eight years, it changes almost completely. So, that being the point, I think it's important for this body, out of respect for our constituents, and also hopefully it'll be a money-saving matter where we do not require the staff to be holding on to file after file after file, when perhaps if that file is so important, we can renew it again. We can renew it with a new flavor of the new council members. We can renew it exactly the way it was before, but usually, if we have to renew it, then some new dialogue is going to happen to find out if, in fact, that matter needs to even continue to be before this council. So, today, you may see things on the file of council members who are no longer here. They may be deceased, God bless them, but at the same time, you may see council files where you're thinking, 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 wait a minute, that person hasn't been on council for six years, yet there's a council file with their name on it. I think it's important and appropriate for us to send a message to the people that we are being diligent with these issues, we are being effective about these issues, and if these issues, for example, have solved themselves, then perhaps we do not need a council file for it. So, with that, this is a, actually, this motion, oddly enough, is brought forth by myself and councilmember Misakowski and Padilla. Misakowski's not here, but only a few months ago. It hasn't been two years, but it's a perfect example where we need to move on items and if we do need to continue those items, we can refresh them and refresh the language and have proper and better dialogue that's relative to today. So, I hope that you'll support this.
And Mr. Cardenas, you forgot to mention we're taking this item up after the previous item, which seeks to increase efficiency and reduce waste. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. I have no problem with it. I have one question, and that is, I personally was involved in the case with Mr. Burnson, where we found a file that was dated 1971 dealing with earthquake safety upgrades, and we found this in 1982. We resurrected it and it became a city law, it was Division 88, Bill and Safety Code, which mandated that we fix 8,400 earthquake unsafe buildings. That would not have happened had we not seen it in the committee roster, things that weren't done. So, my concern is that we're going to push the delete button today and miss some things that may be worthwhile considering. I would like to see some sort of a notification or a listing by the city clerk of all these things before we get rid of them, because there might be some gems hidden in there that no one really thought about or wants to bring back to life, and we'll miss that opportunity if we just push the delete button today. So, if we have a process, I'd like to hear that because I think that'd be valuable, see what's out there that maybe somebody forgot about, that really was a good idea and needs to be explored. If we can have the city clerk come up, it was talked about in committee, those are great points, councilmember. In the meantime, because we did discuss that in the committee, so as a clerk, probably in more detail, we have, as we implement this, that exact verification procedure that you mentioned take place with significant advance time. Unless your agenda is the following, we're coming up on a two-year time period, number one, for both chairs of committees as well as the authors of the motions. Second, just because we're closing council files, it means we can think of a different archive, so you can still go back in the council file index or any other archive tool with the city to look at what had been introduced in the past, even though the council might not fully acted upon. This is just meant to cover that backlog in committee, but the records are still going to be there.
Now, Frank Martinez, city clerk. The motion before you today asked us to develop the necessary procedures, and we would, in fact, put in a notification procedure with sufficient time so that we would say these files have reached the two-year limit of non-action unless you work with the chair to get them scheduled for a status report or something, and then we would move to receive and file them. Just by way of information, we have about 2,200 files in the committees right now. About 1,100 of those, about half are over two years, have not been acted on. In fact, we have one file from 1977 that's still in committee. Clearly, there's a need to go ahead and clear some of this out, but with proper notification.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl.
Point of clarification for the city clerk, and I thank you for being here. There are 1,100 files sitting around that have been around for a long time?
That are over the two years where they haven't had any activity in two years.
Now, tomorrow, I will chair my first committee meeting as chair of Education and Neighborhood Council. Thank you, Mr. Lavine. Well, I see a bunch of files that have been sort of buried somewhere within the process, and they'll percolate up to me and I'll be able to look through them.
Your committee clerk will work with you and will have a complete listing for you, work with your staff in terms of what's pending before your committee, and then begin to go through those and either hear them, or if they reach, if they're in this process and there's no reason to hear them, then they would ultimately be received and filed.
Now, Mr. Smith's point, that there might be some gems or pearls or something valuable that is floating around in these 1,100, would they be surfaced enough to all of us that we can kind of take a quick look at it before they disappear into nowhere?
Yeah, let me remind the council that twice a year, we produce a list already of all the files pending in committees. So, my plan is to modify that process slightly, produce that list, and indicate these here on the list are eligible to be received and filed unless some action is taken. So, that would give everybody an opportunity, including, I plan to notify departments as well, because there may be departments that they want to go to the committee chair and say, this needs to be acted upon or at least a status report given.
Will the public also be somehow brought into the loop since many of these things might have been initiated by the public and buried for political reasons or whatever?
Well, I think in terms of our electronic capability, we can now put these kind of reports up, you know, on the internet on our site and to aid people in getting the information.
Can we instruct you to do that so that that would be customer-friendly, constituent-friendly, and they could have access to it as well?
Absolutely. I intend to do that. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please. Open the roll on this item. Okay, Frank, we're going to take a vote. Okay. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Four eyes.
Next item, please.
Next, Mr. President, item number 26 was called special for card from the public.
Item 26. Card from the public. Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Good morning, everyone. May I please have my three minutes, please? Thank you.
There you go. You've got to get three minutes. Go ahead.
Number 11, then number 26. I believe that YMCA should be open for all USA and not London leaders, people only. Who is now dead, Dr. One Day Davis Turner, whom is Charlie York.
Ma'am, this is item 26.
This is the point 26. Is not open for the public, children, or homeless people.
Ma'am, this is item number 26. I need to ask you to speak on the item.
I have 11 and 26 in.
No, item 26.
11 and 26. Oh, I can't speak on number eleven. I put in my card.
No, that had public hearings already. Item twenty-six on.
You're not going to get away, Alice, for cheating. I put in two cards.
Those items had public hearings before.
Okay, thank you. On number twenty-six, and eleven. Now, we must agree, Charlie York's D, amen. We must say no on number twenty-six. And it has been found out that Ellison Gas Company is at fault and not Department of Water and Power. It is good that these blackouts has happened, and we see that Ellison was not connected to the Department of Water and Power. It was another country building, and school system, and bank vault, and metro.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm going to ask you to conclude at this time. It's not pertinent to the item before us. Call these item twenty-six. Mr. Smith, which is to speak?
Mr. Chairman, President, since this was introduced, we've established the ad hoc committee on Renew L.A. and landfilling issues. I would ask that this go to the committee first and then come back through that process.
Any objection, colleagues?
Excuse me, just a clarification for future agendas. This doesn't need to be reported on every two weeks, then?
There's no objection. The items are referred. Next item, please.
Next item is item number ninety-three, and that was being held on the desk for cards from the public.
We do have numerous speaker cards on item ninety-three. I want to thank you all for your patience. Raheed Boots, I believe, Arsal Awan, Betty Hung, Hussein Manesh, Mike Madani, Hamid Khan, and Hardip Singh, please come forward.
As you approach the microphone, please introduce yourself. Good afternoon, council members and ladies and gentlemen. We are with the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance.
Your name, sir?
My name is Hamid Khan, and I'm with the organizing committee of the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity. We know that this motion has already been approved, but we really wanted to share our side of the story as to what is going on in the lives of thousands of taxi workers in the city of Los Angeles and then the extended county as well, because anything that happens in the city of Los Angeles affects the lives of many surrounding the city as well. We came together with the taxi workers as grassroots organizers and civil rights organizations and social justice organizations in November of two thousand four, and over the last ten months, what we have seen is a picture of despair, hopelessness, poverty, fear, and pure exploitation of workers in the taxi industry. So we really wanted to come in today and appreciate the increase that has taken place with a meter of twenty cents, but quite honestly, it doesn't go far at all. What we are seeing is, and our colleagues and the workers are going to be talking about it very briefly, so what we are seeing really is that people are living in sub-poverty conditions, and we really hope that after people are done, to get a commitment from the city council to see that if we can revisit this case, because we are involved in doing an economic impact study, so I'm going to pass it on to...
Good afternoon. My name is Betty Hung, and I'm with the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles. We're a nonprofit organization that has provided free civil legal services in the greater Los Angeles area for over seventy-five years. As Hamid mentioned, we have been working along with the South Asian Network and the Asian Pacific American Legal Center to form the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. And we thank you very much today for your support and for taking a step in the right direction to increase the meter rate to two-twenty per mile. Our preliminary studies show that taxi workers in Los Angeles endure extreme crushing poverty. A preliminary survey shows that taxi workers, on average, labor twelve to sixteen hours a day, seven days a week, for an average of eighty-three hours per week. Taxi workers in Los Angeles also earn less than five dollars per hour. So despite working more than eighty hours a week, tax, as a taxi worker on average, still makes less than the federal poverty level of nineteen thousand three hundred fifty dollars for a family of four. LATWA, or the Alliance, is currently conducting an economic impact study to gather information on Los Angeles' taxi industry and the work conditions of taxi workers in order to determine an appropriate meter rate that takes into account inflation, the cost of living, gas prices, and that will allow taxi workers and their families to rise out of poverty, thereby ensuring a sustainable taxi industry in Los Angeles. This is especially critical, because as you know, the city charter deems the taxi industry in Los Angeles to be a public utility. We believe that the city can and should take leadership on this issue. For example, in our research, we found that Orange County currently has a meter rate of two forty per mile, and New York and San Francisco have drop rates of two fifty. So we again thank you for your vote today, but we also ask for your commitment to review this issue in a few months, and to examine the report that the Alliance intends to, or is in the process of preparing, and will have completed within the next three months to, in order to consider at that time, a truly meaningful increase that will enable the five thousand taxi workers in Los Angeles and their families to live decent lives. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Zain, but I'm a taxi worker, and I'm with Los Angeles Taxi Worker Alliance. I have been driving taxis for the last fifteen years in Los Angeles. First of all, I thank you and I appreciate all of council members. We did visit them yesterday, especially Ridi and Hardip, and over here, Mr. Rosendale and his deputy, Mr. Philip, and they were very helpful and sympathetic when they heard about your story, what's really happening in the life of cab drivers. There are so much horrible stories in the cab driver life that if you heard, you probably start crying. But we told the story to Betty Hung with a laugh, she had tears in her eyes when she heard what's happening to the cab drivers. We've been, I'm myself, I will tell you, I'm a diabetic and a heart patient, with three children and a wife, living in a one-bedroom apartment. My child asks me every day, Papa, what's wrong with you? You came to this country for a good life. And a better life. How could you can provide us a better place to live? I'm myself, have bachelor of science degree, I've studied over here in electronics. I left electronics because then they all source the job, and I came to Capital Street so I can work as much I can. When I came here, I worked eighty-three hours. We have drivers who are blind. We have, we have a driver who are heart patients, and they die on the job. They work twenty-four hours a day. They go to the airport, three o'clock, eight AM in the morning. They wake up, boom, get ready, go to the airport. When they have their airport day, they work twenty-four hours. Twenty-four hours a day. When they go back home, they're smoking cigarettes, stressed, go home, and they die, have a heart attack, or die, and left their family. I pay, I owe, I pay four hundred dollars in insurance to the insurance company to cover the person sitting on my back by the city ordinance, but I'm not covered. If I get involved in an accident, I have a head injury, arm leg are broken, I'm on the street. I'm homeless, because the four hundred dollars I pay to cover the passenger, but I am not covered. There's so much corruption in the cab industry at this time that you won't even believe it. I told my story, and there was really very sympathetic, and they said, is that true? Because they don't know. Because we have lobbyists come over here, and they give a rosy picture, oh, we have the best service of cab service in LA, we're doing this and we're doing that, and they go and get the money from the cab industry, cab people. And I said, blame me, yesterday I spent the whole day, but I had to pay seventy dollars to the cab company for the lease, and the dues. Forget about my bills, my car rentals, my rent, my apartment, my kids' clothing, my clothing, my food, forget about that, but just seventy dollars to pay them. I didn't work at all yesterday. Today, same thing. Why are there now so many cab drivers over here today? Because they can't even afford to come and talk to us seventy years. But I'm taking my time, and I don't want to hear from my child. That you left your country twenty-eight years ago, you've been here twenty-eight years. What you have done? And when we started, I started organizing cab drivers two and a half years ago. We got warning of death threats, we have warning of being homeless, make us homeless. We have warning that you're not going to live in this country anymore. What kind of country I'm living in? And that's true, that's no stories. And what happened? I used to work for Yellow Cab, they kicked me out from that cab company. I owned the cab, but they kicked me out. I am an independent contractor, and they kicked me out. I went to other cab company, no, I'm working over there, and no one, they heard that I'm trying to organize a cab driver to have a better life in the city of Los Angeles. What they're doing, no, they're trying a severe campaign against me. No, they, tomorrow I had to go to the board meeting, they're pulling me out, Mr. Zahid, but you're giving out this flight to the airport, the cab driver, that you want to work man come and help him show us, how the hell you going to pay? To make this one, to kick me out of from that cab company too. But I'm sorry, I'm very emotional, but I really appreciate, we will come back to your chambers again and tell you sorry in paper if you not be there, and try to help us out. And thank you very much for listening to me, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, honorable council members, present, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Arsal Awan. I drive a New York Checker cab and a member of Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance. I'm driving taxis since last fifteen years. I'm thankful for the raise we are given today. Myself and my coworkers are here today because we are very much concerned about the meter raise, but the raise which is given to us, I'm sorry to say that this is not enough to cover the cost of Los Angeles living. The reason is the gas prices are gone up, my apartment rent, groceries, mean the price of everything in our daily life is gone up. Working twelve hours a day, seven days a week, I lost my family life and social life. If I have any life, anything in my life, that is a stress and frustration. It is not only us, but thousands of others, those who related to us, are facing same pain and miseries. Honorable council members, even working for twelve hours and seven days a week, we don't have any benefit like medical insurance, occasion, one day out of three hundred sixty-five days in a year. We are here today to draw the attention of honorable council to help us get out of this miserable life. Thank you very much for listening to me, your consideration, and we are looking forward for better future of cab industry and drivers and their family. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, council members and everybody. I am Hussein Fadmanesh. I'm working nine years with Taxi, a member of Taxi Workers Alliance of Los Angeles. I appreciate your concern that you already raised the meter, but it's far from the demand of the taxi drivers. The life of taxi drivers is nothing more than misery and slavery. Because of many hours' work, every day, seven day a week, being away from the family, there are many divorces between the drivers. There are kids that are involved with the crimes because of not supervision of the family and poverty. In order to improve the life of children, that just was talking about in this meeting, we have to improve the life of the families. So if you want to help the children, please, concern about the family members, father and mother, that they are working and they are working very hard. At the moment, thousands of taxi drivers are in poverty. No one can claim, no one can claim is living in a great city. We look forward to have your support for next meeting and solve this problem and bring up the level of life of drivers in a reasonable situation. Thank you all.
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Madani. I'm a member of the Taxi Workers Alliance, City of Los Angeles. I have been working for the taxi industry since nineteen seventy-four, and you cannot compare, today, the cost of living like twenty years ago. For a taxi driver, the cost of living is not just the gas, which is right now three dollars per gallon. Also, we have to pay for maintenance, we have to pay for liability insurance, we have to pay for franchise, DOT, and a lot of other dues and costs. Even you support us and twenty-two, two dollars and twenty cents, that's not enough. I think since two thousand one, that was the last increase, the cost of living has been so high that makes a taxi driver, and puts them in a bad, worse condition compared with the other workers in the city of Los Angeles. I think if you just look at other workers in the other industries, they make much, much more than a taxi driver, which works seven days a week, to after sixteen hours, about eighty or more than eighty hours a week, and not having a good life. We really appreciate you reconsider, and we'd like to have your support as long as we work in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Hardip Singh, and I'm with the Taxi Worker Los Angeles, and I drive this cab since about three years, and professionally, I'm auto technician, and I have small brake, lamp, and all kinds of license. But in nineteen eighty-six, I had an accident, my friend, he died at a spot, and my collarbone broken, ribs broken physically, I cannot do all the heavy jobs, so I find, start this job, but sometime on the airport, we have to pick up the suitcase, and we don't have any health insurance, in the night, we have some pain, do you know what I do? I take it, iron, iron, sleep, and tomorrow, go to work again. And we are not making any money, so we can't have insurance. Even my friend, he's waiting for here, and he has to go with me, take a ride, because he has to take, he has to pick up his kids from the school, because his wife is working, and he's driving cab, and we have to pick up the kids, drop the kids, and because he doesn't have insurance, he has no, he cannot afford it, because his wife can stay home. So I don't want to take too much time, I just thank everybody that you guys raised the price twenty dollars, as Mike told this enough now, so I will just please convince you to do, consider that again, review that again in the next few months, and help us please. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. In closing, I just want to say one thing, that a quick comment from one of our colleagues, a taxi worker who had to leave, because, you know, right now, as these workers are here, they're losing money, so it really is crucial. He just wanted to talk about the fifty cent surcharge in the meter, and basically, his story is that his daughter asked him, as he was dropping his daughter off, that what is this sticker in your cab? And he says, well, it's a sticker, so I can ask for fifty cent surcharge because of the gas prices. And his daughter said, what, I mean, are you a beggar, or what? And he said, well, I mean, I don't know what answer to give him, because, you know, when, when we have passengers, when they leave the cab, and they, you know, all your money they're making is off of tips, and they give you a two-dollar tip, you're not going to stand there and ask them for a fifty cent surcharge. So basically, what people are asking here is, that if that surcharge could be included in the flag drop, and it only takes three to five minutes, as a computer programming in the meter, to put that surcharge, rather than taxi workers standing at the door and asking for fifty cents from the passengers. So it really, really makes a big difference. So in the end, we just want to say is, that the Los Angeles Taxi Workers Alliance is doing an economic impact study, is doing an analysis, so we're really hoping to get a commitment from you all to really revisit this issue, which is of critical nature within the next three months, and we will be approaching Councilmember Grohl's office, and Councilmember Rosendale's office, and Councilmember Parks' office, and other members of the Transportation Committee, to really take leadership in this thing and revisit this thing in the next three months. Thank you very much.
This concludes, so once again, I'll put a comment on this item. I have three members wishing to speak at this time, Ms. Grohl, followed by Mr. Zain and Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you, and thank you so much for all of you being here today, and particularly staying through all of our discussion of our challenges we have in the city with our electricity yesterday. But colleagues, if we didn't understand the plight of taxi workers before... But colleagues, if we didn't understand the plight of taxi workers before, today we do even more so and I appreciate your emotional presentation because I think that all hit us as well as to the kinds of challenges you face as the taxi workers here in the city of Los Angeles. And what we have before us today, colleagues, they haven't been raised since two thousand and one. And Department of Transportation came forward with the twenty cent increase. And we talked about it in committee and we had a chance to meet in the hallway briefly last night as I was rushing off to a meeting. But we caught each other and chatted about some of the problems and the gas prices, et cetera. So I commit to having this item back before council. What we want to do and I think they approve of this is moving this forthwith now, not letting this stay here, but actually giving them their twenty, the twenty cent increase, but having a greater discussion on the gas surcharge and additional potential revenue generated for the taxi cabs as well as ensuring that we are going after those banded taxis who are not part of the system and money weight. And those of you that have legally been participating in our taxi service here in the city of Los Angeles. So as chair of the committee, I commit to that. And Ms. Hawn wanted to, she turned to me and said, "Can we do that? Can we add automatic fifty cents?" You've been heard today. And I think that's a very important message, hopefully, to send back to all of your other members that could not be here today, that this council is listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. An area that you didn't cover, that's very important, and I see the inspector from the Department of Transportation Taxi, Tom, is the banded cabs. Folks haven't even discussed that. And I wrote out with the Taxi Enforcement Section a number of times, there are banded cabs that are throughout this city ripping each and every one of you and every legitimate cab driver off. They're picking up fares, they're charging these people for those fares, and they are undercutting what you legitimate taxi operators are doing in the city of Los Angeles. And we are working to try and increase the enforcement effort. You go to New York, you go to other parts of this country, you don't have banded taxi cabs. The banded taxi cabs are undercutting everything that you're working for. I have no problem with increasing the flag drop to increase the compensation, but what's really hurting your business right now is the hundreds of banded taxi cabs that are throughout the city of Los Angeles who are ripping off each and every one of you and your industry and undercutting you. Something needs to be done to address that. And there is a union that has filed an unfair labor practice because what we try to do to increase enforcement, the police department's willing to do it, the Department of Transportation's willing to do it, but you folks need to work with that union that has filed unfair labor practice in our efforts to put those banded taxi cab drivers out of business, impound those taxi cabs, and put that business aside. You'll get additional revenue, you'll have additional passengers, and I would encourage you to work in that endeavor to aggressively pursue and eliminate the banded taxi cab drivers in Los Angeles because they are everywhere except LAX. Everywhere in the city, there are banded taxi cabs and many of them in lower economic areas ripping off the people of Los Angeles. I just want to add that to the flavor of what we're talking about. I'm sure you all understand about the banded taxi cab drivers. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
I just was pleased to have it reconsidered so that you could get up and speak. And I'm no longer on transportation. I was for a minute and a half in a transition here. But the issues I want to know more about is the insurance issues that you're not covered by a rec. Obviously, the price of gas has gone up and all these other issues have impacted your industry. So not only will we forthwith what we did today, but I look forward to more discussions on how we can work together because your issues are real and as Councilwoman Gruel pointed out, you've made an impression on all of us and we want to work with you going forward.
Ms. Hawn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanted to rise and say, you certainly did make an impression on all of us. Sometimes people think we're not listening and we've already got our minds made up about issues. But what I want to say is the time you took away from your jobs to come down here today, I think has been valuable, has been important, and I think it really will make a difference long term. Many times, we don't pay attention to the plight of the taxi cab driver. And you are the ones that we expect to be, you know, the welcoming face for Los Angeles, for tourists that come here. We expect you to be the one to guide them to their destination. I know I've had neighbors who have called taxis to take their kids to school. I know seniors, people have called for their mother to take a taxi to go do errands. I mean, you really are out there shuttling to and from at all levels. From the young to the old. And we really, on a daily basis, we trust you with these lives. But I don't think we've been showing you the respect that you deserve. No one needs to be working that hard and not making a decent living and providing for their families. And I hope we can do something to change that. And I know there are certain things we can act on today, but hopefully, we will take it up in Ms. Gruel's committee and we can make some long-term changes so that this is a good, decent job that pays well, that has benefits. And it's a crime, in my opinion, that this day and age, you don't have the kind of insurance that you need for yourself. You put yourself out of harm's way every single day. As was said yesterday, every intersection that you went through yesterday during the power outage was a life and death situation, really. You never know how people are going to behave. Anyway, hopefully, this will change things long term. I'm not sure all it's going to take too, but I think you've got the council's ear and attention to try to make things better and to improve the quality of your lives.
Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it's been a long meeting and I know that the meter is ticking literally as we are here, so I will be short. I want to thank you. I'm sorry that I was in my field office yesterday when you came by here in City Hall, but I really appreciated the information. Taxi Worker Alliance, it takes a lot of courage to do what you're doing and I want to recognize that. I want to thank the South Asian Network as well for their tremendous work as well as the Asian Pacific American Legal Center. I think there's also something that bears some investigation, which I'm sure Ms. Gruel, as chair of Transportation Committee, will look at. A solution, because there's a lot of work and people who have to use taxis as well. There may be ways of getting more income to drivers while also allowing folks who use taxis not necessarily to always have to pay for that. So I'd be interested in raises if they go into the pocket, but we have to look at that level of the companies themselves, take seriously some of the stories that we hear. Kind of goes without saying that people do that as a throwaway in many cities. Oh, taxi companies, there's management problems. Sometimes people use corruption, other things. But whether we go deep into that and actually spend the time, I think bears some witness because I hate to play one class of working class people against another class when sometimes it's those people who can't afford a car, who take a taxi to the grocery store, as you all know. So I think as we look at future potential increases, that may bear some investigation first. Thank you very much.
Mr. LeBange.
Just then, echo the comments of my colleagues. And we need to look forward to seeing this in your committee. I know we dealt with it when now the mayor was chair of that committee, but we got to deal with it more. And I would just say instead of fifty cents, I think it should be a dollar as a surcharge just to be fair on that. And I want to thank Janice Hahn, truly want to thank Janice Hahn because you explain yourself and the words that she says, you know, to listen to the concerns of you and help think about the whole issue. So anyway, we look forward to getting this back to the committee. And also, I want to ask you sometime what your longest fare was and who's the most famous person you ever drove and what high school in India. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Ms. LeBange. Members, any further comments? Now let's open the roll, close the roll, and delegate the vote. Okay, that carries over for a second reading. Mr. Reyes.
It's want to announce that the panel committee will start twenty minutes after council finishes.
Okay. I do believe that was the last item called special. Madam Clerk, remaining items, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion to post and refer.
The excuse is on the desk. Councilwoman Zain requests to be excused Friday, October fourteenth for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. Reyes moves. That excuse is granted.
Council President Padilla requests to be excused Friday, September sixteenth to leave at noon and also Wednesday, September twenty-eighth to leave at noon. Those are both for city business and a motion is required.
Mr. Parks moves. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Hahn requests to be excused Friday, September twenty-third to leave at eleven thirty for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. LeBange moves. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Gruel requests to be excused November twenty-second and twenty-third for personal business. That meets council policy.
Ms. Gruel is excused.
Councilmember Weiss requests to be excused from today's meeting and for tomorrow. Those are both for city business. A motion is required.
Mr. LeBange moves. Mr. Weiss is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you very much, colleagues. It's the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Announcements? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have an announcement that this is an event co-hosted by LA Sentinel, the KGLH Radio and the Beat Radio along with the Brotherhood Crusade that on Friday, September sixteenth, from six AM to eight PM at thirty-eight hundred South Frenchell Boulevard at the LA Sentinel Office, they'll have an all-day radio forum to raise money for the relief effort in the Gulf States.
Mr. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to announce the Second Annual South Los Angeles Bolero Festival hosted by myself and Council District Nine and it will be in Council District Eight, but that doesn't matter. It'll be Sunday. No, oh, yeah, you know, yeah, that's right. You know what? Bernard Parks is going to be there dancing. Okay? Romantic dancing with anyone who wants to take him up on it. All they need to do is see me and I will hook them up. Okay? Okay, all right. The proceeds will. All right, Sunday, September the eighteenth, from eleven AM to six PM in the Exposition Park Rose Garden. Yes, it is in the eighth district and we're going to have some incredible performances by Trio Los Dandys, Yadi Morey and his orchestra, Trio Guanajuara, Trio Casablanca, and the Mariachi Divas, and special performances by City Hearts Youth Group.
Other announcements, colleagues? Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I just want to remind any of the channel thirty-five viewers who are watching this right now. It's one twenty-two in the afternoon and the polls close at eight o'clock for Venice, Mar Vista, Westchester, Playa del Rey. The special election with the late Mike Gordon's seat, seat fifty-three. So if you haven't voted, make the democracy work. Go and vote in the next seven hours. Thank you.
Other announcements, colleagues? If not, don't be congratulating Councilmember Reyes for the wonderful announcement along with the mayor yesterday for the latest round of community meetings and hearings regarding the future of the Los Angeles Strip, who you've been working on it for many years and we're finally getting somewhere. Please rise for adjourned motions. Adjourned tributes, colleagues? Mr. LeBange.
Thank you, members. I ask that we all stand in adjourned memory of Charlie Navarro, who lived to be a hundred and one years old. He was a great city controller for many years. He signed our first check, I think he signed Mr. Parks' share check for many years at the police department. For those who've been around a long time who know, he was a gentleman who used to be in the second floor right down there as city controller. Prior to that, he was a councilmember of the tenth district in which he served. He died in his sleep at Park La Brea where he lived. He was an accomplished musician, entered politics in nineteen fifty-one when he was elected to the council seat of the tenth district. And he was just a very great gentleman, Charlie Navarro. So I ask that we all stand in memory of Charles Navarro.
All members, and I would just add, Mr. LeBange had the opportunity to meet him a couple years ago in the private tower room. We had a reception for a current and previous council member. Without due respect, Bernard, I think he's been, he was the most dapper council member ever in his day. Dapper comptroller. Other tributes? Other tributes? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourned motions. First one is Brock Peters, actor vest remembered for his portrayal in The Kill a Mockingbird, which received great acclaim. He also was a reoccurring actor in the Star Trek series on television and at least two movies. He was a, also received film credits in Porky and Wes, also The Pawn Broker, The Ghost of Mississippi, and a variety of others, both TV and movie roles. Received an Emmy in The Voices of the People in two thousand and two. He also had a variety of roles in Gunspoke, Magnum P.I., Murder She Wrote. He was born George Peters in July nineteen twenty-seven in Harlem, attended the Music of Arts High School in New York City, studied University of Chicago and City College in New York. Later became a co-founder of the Dance Theater of Harlem and he earned a lifetime achievement award in nineteen seventy-six from the National Film Society and in nineteen ninety from the Screen Actors Guild. And in nineteen ninety-two, he received a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. Also, in nineteen seventy-six, he was inducted into the Black Filmmakers Hall of Fame. He died at the age of seventy-eight on Tuesday, August twenty-third. They had memorial services in Los Angeles at St. John Episcopal Church Sunday, August The next one is Leon Laurie, was a preacher, an educator, civil rights leader, once taught the late Martin Luther King Jr. He led the segregation of public facilities in Tampa, Florida. His association with civil rights movement dated back to nineteen forties where he taught theology at Morehouse College where Martin Luther King was one of his students. In nineteen sixty, he led peaceful protests in Tampa, lunch counters, helped found the city's first biracial bank. He served as president of Florida chap in NAACP in nineteen seventy-six. He passed away at age ninety-two on Saturday, August the twentieth.
Mr. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I wanted to adjourn in memory of Mrs. Doritha Johnson. She was the aunt and younger sister of the late mother of the general manager of cultural affairs, Margie Reese. She passed away in the aftermath of the New Orleans Hurricane Katrina on September the first, two thousand and five. Funeral services were Saturday, September the tenth, in Baton Rouge, Louisiana. She was retired from the East Baton Rouge Public School Board and was an active volunteer in the Southern University System.
All members.
Thank you. Thank you. I also wanted to adjourn in memory of Mr. Agajan Emrani, who passed away on September second, two thousand and five. He was the loving father of Yahuda Emrani, Yudi, Joseph Emrani, and Evrahim Emrani, Abi. He was also the proud grandfather of Jacob Emrani, Jake, John Emrani. His memory will be cherished by all who knew and loved him. His services took place on September the second at Sinai Temple.
Other tributes? Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.